Good evening, everyone. Seeing at 7:00 and I know who's not going to be here and I know someone's on the way. So this is the best we can do, but we do have a quorum. So we'll begin. Please stand for the motion. Pledge allegiance to the flag of states America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, item 1A, approved minutes from the August 26, 2024 regular meeting. Bit of a motion. Okay, motion made by John. Have a second?
I'll second.
Yes, Andrew will second. Gary, comments or corrections?
There's a typo in section 2A. The word "republic," I believe it should be "republican."
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, with that correction, see no other comments? All those in favor of accepting the minutes signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carried unanimously.
Oh, sorry. I haven't had a chance to watch the video yet. Sorry.
So you're abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 1B, additions to the agenda. John Welsh?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I guess a motion to add to the agenda under item 3F in superintendent's report. Request by the Board of Finance for an overview of your financials.
Okay, we'll make that 3F. First, we have to vote on it. The way we have, take a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by mandatory discussion or comments? We need two-thirds majority to add it to the agenda. All those in favor of adding to the agenda, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carried. And we'll make it 3F. Overview of your financials. Any other additions? See, none. Item 1C, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Good evening, everyone. No comments? Okay. Chairperson's report. First thing, I'd like to thank the entire staff for a smooth school year opening. It was good to see things went as, I guess, as smooth. They don't always go perfectly, but went pretty smooth and we're glad to see the school year moving along. Next item, we do still the Board of Ed vacancy. I did talk to Republican Town Committee Chair yesterday, who told me there were two people they were considering and they would be sending us a name soon. Third item, Saturday, I went to UConn football game. It was Band Day for Connecticut and to my pleasant surprise to be there that East Granby marching band was able to go there. And I'd certainly like to thank their band director, Allison Shalou, and the parents who volunteered that day because I understand they started their day at 7:00 AM to get on a bus to go down there and practice and then be able to perform at halftime with other schools that were invited. Now, I think this is a big deal, it's a Saturday. Schools were invited to Band Day around Connecticut and there were probably only 10 schools that responded because their band director thought it was important to be visible of where 25,000 people are there and be part of a college presentation. So I commend Allison for doing that and the parents because it went from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM and I hope the kids had fun, they sounded good, and I was proud. I felt good seeing, sitting there, especially after the week before of UConn's loss, to see the team do well that day and certainly see the East Granby band. So to pass it on to the staff, Allison, appreciate that.
There's a direct correlation between those two things, right?
There are direct correlation, I think, except, yeah, UConn knew before the game started they were going to be there, scored all their points early. Okay, item 3, superintendent's report. Let's see.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is the first board meeting since school started.
Yep.
That's right, because we had one just before the start of school. So welcome back, everyone. It's kind of what we do, once we're in, we're in. You know, it's, week one is over, week two, kids are getting acclimated. First item on my report is looking at the student representative for the Board of Education. Each year, we have two high school students, either two juniors, two seniors, one junior, one senior that reports to the Board of Education. I know we've had some kind of discussions in terms of what we would like, you know, if there's anything additional, you know, back many years ago before social media, for students to come and report, it was probably new information for many people. We have a variety of ways of which information is shared now. So before we look at bringing some names forth for that role, just wondering if the Board would like me to, you know, work with the principal in terms of identifying some additional, I don't want to say tasks, because we don't want to make it a chore, but for some responsibilities that students might be excited to be, you know, involved in at the board level.
You asking for comments?
If there are any, sure.
Well, I have one. We have bylaws of the Board on student representatives and all I would ask is, they look at that. It does mention in there one junior and one senior, which I think would make sense because then we're not always replacing two kids every year. It also says that they're elected by the students. I'm not sure if that's possible. But I think the main point of the policy is, one of the main problems that has constantly occurred in Board-student relations arise from the fact that students are able to comment on issues before the Board only after the fact or in audiences. When many important programs and policies affect students are decided upon at board meetings, there is no student voice in the actual debate. And consequently, the composition of those same programs and policies lose the benefit of mutual and spontaneous interchange of ideas. I think, and I know I said before, I would like this group to feel they're part of the Board and that they're really bringing us student issues. You know, I know we, in the past, we had issues from masks to fields and things like that, and I think the student representatives know those type of things and I think they feel more involved with it. And I know statewide to Cave, there's been a lot of discussion on how to use the student representatives as the voice of the school. So I looked at the policy and the policy seems to be pretty, pretty good. I think we've been using them in the past, give us information. You're right, Missy, through social media, we get a lot of that stuff they do now. And I feel bad for the kids running around to try to pick up information. I would rather have them just follow the policy and be a voice for the students, whatever it may be. You know, we have discussions over graduation each year and lots of things. So that's my other point is, take a look at the policy on it. Anyone else?
Yeah, I do. Having just heard, you read the policy, I mean, that certainly is not what our student representatives have been doing over the course of my tenure on the Board, going on nine years. And I would agree with the policy that it would be good if we had student representatives that in fact sat with the Board and attended the meetings, you know, not just come in, give a quick update on what's going on in schools, which is wonderful to get that. So I almost think that when we say student representatives, if you read the policy, then they are, they're on the Board, they're non-voting members.
Correct.
But they're on the Board and they're, you know, here for discussion purposes, they're here for, you know, listening to and, you know, imparting whatever wisdom they have as students in our district. And then I think the student representatives that have been to practice here in East Granby, which is just report on the comings and goings and the doings in our, in our schools, you know, I don't even know if our student representatives that are on the Board should be also doing that or whether we could have other people reporting as just giving updates and maybe having that not be someone that's appointed for the school year, but rather have students have opportunity to take turns within the middle school and the high school and covering, you know, all four of our schools on a kind of a rotating basis. I think that having these young people come forward and speak, much like when we have our, our Southfield Ag students come down and give their presentations, much like when we have our students come in to give us-
Presentations.
Presentations for, I think that's wonderful. I think any opportunity that a middle school or a high school student has to come and have the opportunity to speak in public, you know, it's just a wonderful bonus and gives an opportunity for them. So that's my comment.
Okay. Anyone else? I just want to confirm, by, by practice, we have not been adhering to our policy. Well, that's why I took a look at the policy to see.
I was just going to say, I know in communications a while back, I think it was Whitney, you had suggested kind of if they could almost not be mentors but connected with some of the elementary school kids, get their voices too, right? We talked about that. Yeah, I would love to hear more about the kids. I mean, I love the information, but we get a lot of it from the newsletters that get sent to us. But anytime getting the kids here is great, for sure, but to be able to hear like their thoughts on things.
The student voice. Yeah, the newsletters on Friday, administrators hear is terrific that we get from each school so we know what's going on. It's, it's nice to hear those things. Usually I only hear about what we don't have money for and cut this and this and that. So it's great to get from the schools each, each week what's going on, but we'd like to have the kids be more of a, a voice and a concern. I don't want to have the parents at high school have to come to our meetings to talk about things. We should hear first from the kids and have them feel comfortable. I'm not sure if they do, they just feel they're coming and reporting to us. So that's my only comment. Anyone else?
I think procedurally, John, you might know this one, at any given time in a meeting with a majority vote, we could invite a guest speaker, right? I mean, I think it's two-thirds for, to bring in somebody not a member of the Board to speak.
Do you mean-
Invite a student if it's a topic that the student wants to bring, if it's on the agenda, we could invite them during that talking point to join the discussion.
I mean, if it's on the agenda, anybody can come and speak to whatever the point is on the agenda, like in terms of our-
I mean, once we're past the comments from visitors, but I think if we want to, somebody to interact and actually have a speaker to interact.
You mean that's not on the agenda?
No, I mean on the agenda.
Oh.
Well, but you're right, it does, that does, it's stated in the policy as well that they can comment. They don't, like John said, they don't get to vote.
Yeah, they don't get to vote.
Executive session, but they certainly-
Typically, you don't have somebody debating with-
There's certainly things you'd like to have-
During discussion, but you can invite somebody to have that discourse.
You could have, but as Missy points out, it would have to be put on the agenda.
Okay.
So it would have to come to, you know, to the Chair to be put on the agenda.
Kind of like we have, I mean-
It almost could be kind of thing that, if, I would see that as being something that if someone wanted to come and speak, you know, again, here under section 6, comments from visitors, someone could come and say, you know, I'm interested in-
Be put on the agenda.
In having this, having this discussion with the Board, can we, can I request that this be put on the agenda?
I don't think-
And then that would be at the discretion of the Chair to-
I don't think we need to have them at every board meeting because they have after-school activities for us.
Right. And not every board.
Yeah, I get that.
So it could be maybe like when something comes up, then we put it on the agenda, but we don't, I don't think we need to expect them to stay at every board meeting.
Right, I agree.
Well, if you feel comfortable with the idea, then that we're not, that we are doing it correctly by, by appointing or voting, I guess it's appointed, right?
Well, it says representatives will be elected by his or our student body, but I don't think-
I think they've been appointed, if I'm not mistaken, they've been appointed.
I don't think anyone wants to run for those positions. I think you find a couple of kids willing to do it.
Is that a line?
I'm assuming they're, they're appointed by the high school principal.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that. But if we have those students appointed and whatnot and have them actually serve as student representatives under our policy, I think that would cover that.
Yeah.
You know, it's-
No, I think, I think it'd be nice to-
Sure, it's nice to be able to say to, to a young person, go home and go do your homework. But if we really want to think that they're student representatives under our policy and, and be able to present and speak to, you know, issues or concerns that are fed to them by other students, they would have that, you know, they would be regular members of the Board, just non-voting.
Yeah.
I could see that as being the conduit for that, rather than saying, oh, you know, anytime any, any student wants to come to the Board of Ed, great, you know, come, make the request. It just-
No, I'd say it would be those appointees.
Yeah.
Lisa did some legwork with other districts, kind of requesting how, you know, they work with their student representatives. And it goes from everything from, they don't have representatives to similar to something that we've been doing to sitting, you know, at the table. And so as we're discussing, like right now, we would say to a student, you know, from your perspective, you know, what, you know, do you think the involvement or this and that? So there's a huge, huge range out there. I think Cave has taken it on a little bit to kind of have a better idea. It's a bylaw, it's not a policy, so, well, it's our policy, it's not a, you know, state.
Do we know what our neighbors to the west and the north do?
I'd have to look through the stack. I summed through it.
It's a clean stack.
Yeah. And, and sometimes what's written is not what's being-
I meant by immediate west and immediate north.
Okay. Tim knows, I don't know my north from south from east to west. This is still-
That would be Grandview, Southfield. Ready, weapons. Geographically challenged.
Yeah. I don't think they replied, though, Mr. Welsh.
Like going off of what I had mentioned prior to about having, like going to the each level, like picking a representative from like, you know, Seymour and All Grove, like what did you guys do this year? What's a concern this month or whatever that is? I know that I got approached by my neighbor and she was like, how do I go to the Board of Ed and talk about the homework policy? I'm like, well, like maybe this would be a good idea, like you have your student representative that's a junior or senior and you are able to like converse with another student and then bring, like have a partner in mind, if you will. Yeah.
Yeah, it could be pretty powerful for the students because according to our bylaws here, they actually have a connection with their student council in school. And I don't think we've ever, I don't know what they do, but I think that's a good way. And so we, you know, get a student voice before people come pounding on our doors. And homework policy is a good one. Who knows the homework issue better than the kids do?
Right.
If they want to make comments. I know every parent has a comment, but, you know, the kids are the ones doing it.
Right.
Kids are, you know, we spend a lot of money for kids and I think we should be looking at what the needs are, that's going to be helpful. Okay, anyone else? I don't want to belabor that topic. Okay, Missy, thank you.
Thank you for that feedback and I will pass that on. Okay, I was requested to give a school bus update, which was on my thought anyway. It's the beginning of the school year. We know we had a shift in our buses from 7:00 to 6:00. So clearly, we expect to have an impact. What does that look like? Kind of a brief overview. There takes some time to tweak. East Granby is pretty unique because all of our children are rostered on buses, but it doesn't mean they all participate in the ridership. So, you know, many districts, there's a certain mileage of kids that are, are considered walkers. We don't have walkers in East Granby, so everybody gets rostered onto a bus. The bus, the seating is a 71 student capacity, passenger capacity. We right now have rosters for our elementary, anywhere between 46 and 62 students on our elementary buses. And none of this accounts for students that are pick up or drop off. So these are strictly the, the rosters compiled, you know, with all of our children.
I'm sorry, so if I'm in, if I'm in second grade, I'm considered as a bus student regardless of what, in reality?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's just, here's how many students we have in this particular grade?
Yes. So the bus company will look at the stops and of course, you know, you might have two stops on a particular road one year, but the next year, those kids graduated and, but we have, you know, four more stops on a road that we didn't go to the previous year. So they will, they will kind of determine those routes. Same with middle and high school. Middle and high school, we are rostered higher than 71. The roster is anywhere between 73 and 97. But I'll give you an example like on the-
I'm sorry, does that take into account? That's the combined middle, high school?
Correct.
It's the same pickup. Does that take into account the students that in fact have their painted parking spaces?
It does not.
Okay.
So for instance, if I look at a particular bus roster, there's anywhere between 18 and 30, you know, juniors and seniors on that bus. And if you look at how many kids are either picked up, dropped off, have late entry because of senior privileges, or drive, right? So again, that roster versus ridership is, could be vastly different.
I'm sorry, so the roster was 97?
Yes.
But the ridership is then less, I'm just enthralled with the painting of this year of the parking spaces.
But my senior does not get painted his spot, but he has a spot that he's paid to paint, but he's on a roster even though he parks his car. It's like, sorry to chime in now.
So if all the kids took the bus and no one drove one day, we wouldn't have rooms on the bus?
Correct. This is really no different than any other year, though, in terms of how the buses are, you know, determined, especially for middle, high school.
It's the same, I'm sorry, it's the same thing, pick up and drop off, it's not accounted for.
Correct.
So the roster is just-
It's how many kids in our district.
Okay.
Right.
From middle, high school.
Yeah. We are still getting more of a ridership count as well as the timeframe. We're still kind of early. And if there's significant differences, so if we find that one bus might have, let's just say has, you know, 40 kids that aren't riding the bus for whatever reason, okay? And another bus has the majority of kids riding, there might be some shifts in the routes to make it a little bit more even. Same with time. I mean, obviously, the number of kids a bus is picking up is directly correlated to the time that takes the bus to go through all of their stops. So we're still looking at that. We have made some shifts. We did have a bus that was getting, later, we made a shift to a middle school, high school run that starts just like five minutes earlier, which helps us on the elementary end because, as you know, our buses are middle, high school and then go pick up our elementary You know, if you think about it in very simple forms, by decreasing a bus, let's say every bus then absorbed three additional stops. I mean, it's not a direct science, but if you kind of, you know, think about how many stops, you know, a bus might make, we've decreased one bus, so each bus picks up X amount of, you know, stops, you know, three or four stops, you know?
But it seems like some buses picked up more and some picked up none, for sure.
Well, that I can't, I'm not sure.
No, I'm just saying it's not as simple as that. I just want to make one note that when we cut a bus, I know you said it, we knew it was going to have an impact. I guess I was under the impression it wasn't going to have a huge impact because we were told we were down those buses last year anyway, so.
We were, we were operating on six buses, yeah.
Right, so I was surprised at some of the changes I saw at the middle, high school route, not going down certain roads any longer, things like that, why it, and why it would have such a big impact if we were told we weren't, it wasn't going to. Same with, I know Park and Rec used to use the kids taking the bus to other farms, that's no longer happening, so.
Right.
I'm just saying it's not as much, I think it is more of an impact than we were under the impression.
We also have, I think on my last report, right, we have like 51 more students-
Right.
Than this time last year. And there was a lot of enrollments late spring over the summer.
That's why I was always concerned about this. It was always my-
We are still within the, the passenger number for each bus, you know?
I'm not necessarily talking about that, I'm talking about the, the things that were cut out of routes to speed up time. Sorry, Tim, I know you wanted to say something.
No, I guess my thing is, and I was surprised, I looked at the policy, I mean, we are policy-driven. I saw, we need to look at the policies and I wanted to look at it when I heard people talking about the bus. I thought we had an hour for kids to get home. I mean, last year, people were saying it was an hour for kids on the bus and I thought that was within our policy, but I understand our policy is 45 minutes.
45 minutes.
And, I don't know, it's an hour in my book whenever I've seen kids, ever been picking up kids, an hour or more, it's, it's been, it's an hour. It was an hour last year. I'm not sure what it is this year, but I know it's not shorter. And the buses seem to be crowded and like, you know, we were doing things with Park and Rec moving kids, we're not able to, I'm just wondering whether, do we need another bus? I mean, how many kids are, the buses are filled. I mean, if the kids all decided on one day to take the bus, we don't have enough buses for them and we're responsible to have enough transportation for them.
That goes back to, I've said it a few times, I don't know if we've gotten any precedent from any other surrounding districts, but I think we need a waiver, like, or a document. I've heard of some districts, I don't know which districts, but I've heard this is done. But I know of plenty of families just within my kids' friend circles that have not taken the bus since I've known them. So if that's going to be the case, I think in beginning of the year or end of year, prior year, before you start the school year, we send out a document saying, will you be utilizing the bus? I mean, we can allow it for emergency situations, but you, you need 24-hour notice or something so they can plan that because part of the issue is, I think, bus routes are not optimized, where you could have, you could have one kid on a random side street that that bus has to go down even though that kid's never going to be on the bus, but they have to go look. But if you know he's not going to be, that's four minutes right there because they didn't have to go down to that cul-de-sac, turn around, come back. So I think we need to put out a document and say, if you're not going to use the bus, please tell us so we can optimize bus routes.
Right, because then we know if this bus has a bunch of kids not taking it anymore.
Because the bus could be going this way, but this whole section over here, maybe they're all being driven because one mom's taking three kids on that road. Might not even be a reason to go that way anymore.
Could I ask Tim a few questions, Tim?
Yeah.
If you have a chance.
Sure.
So if I'm not mistaken, you coordinate the middle school, high school bus?
Exactly, co-coordinating Patrick Osserson, but I still-
Yeah, okay.
-tend to be the go-to.
And, you know, again, this school year, we've dropped a bus. So is it fair to say that what we've got for the first few days here is a work in progress?
Definitely.
And is there, you know, in your mind, certainly a need to be looking at rerouting and changing bus assignments and the whole nine yards for the middle, for the middle high school?
At this time, it's still early because to Ricky's point, the buses do have to honor the routes and make sure that, and, you know, we don't have a document at the moment, but the buses will follow the routes with integrity until they are quite certain that they don't have to stop at a stop anymore. So that's not something that they continue to do for the entirety of the school year, they just do it for the first few weeks until those adjustments set in place. Like it also-
And I'm sorry, and we built those routes based on roster?
Rosters and what makes sense geographically. You know, I'm thinking one particular route, you know, like, just, just for, for context, from last year, we went from seven buses to six buses when routes had been established. That was like an audible. I don't want to say a cannon, but it was definitely an adjustment that we had to make with what we had. And there were some runs that were, when these were overstuffed, I mean, there were there areas in town that had more flexibility to push what that bus was dissolved into. Whereas this year, you know, going into the school year, we knew we had six, M&amp;J had a little bit more ahead of, you know, notice ahead of time so they could make the adjustments prior. So yes, there might have been some runs last year that were not yet affected, that are now a little bit more effective this year. There were some runs that were significantly affected last year that are hopefully not as affected this year. Yeah, but we were still trying to figure out who was getting on the bus, who's not using the bus, and how long those runs take. As it stands right now, M&amp;J bus is doing, as Missy said, the ridership count, the head count for students who actually are on all of those buses. They're actually doing a head count on bus one to see if there's room for eight riders that need to go to E.G.E. Granby Farms, per the communication I have with Alicia Van Neal today via email. So that is a possibility that they might be able to put those students on there. I can't speak to it yet because they haven't given you the head count yet. But that is something that we're still looking to, just at the start of the year, yeah. And as far as the times of the routes, I did speak with Jackie McDonough this evening prior to this meeting, just to be prepared, and then we had this type of discussion. And her take was she didn't want to give any false information because right now, those runs are still very, very new. There's a lot of wrinkles that they have to iron out because they're going through. But we have made some adjustments, you know, there, there was one particular bus that we did have start the high school, middle school run five minutes earlier because it was a ride into our school, my school, at 7:24, when that bus had a stop that was supposed to be at a house at 7:23 for one of Marcy's students. So that, that's just one example of a bug that we have to fix, you know, as, as we're building it. This isn't anything new from previous years, it's always the way it's been done. This isn't anything new from previous years, it's always the way it's been done, and by the time we get to, I'd say towards third, fourth week of September, I think it's a little bit more of a well-well machine for that.
And when we say 45 minutes, which is policy.
Which is policy, yeah.
When we say 45 minutes, are we talking like, you know, 45 minutes from the bus, the first bus departing, or do we, 45 minutes from the moment that?
My interpretation of, of that policy goes back to my first year as a transportation director.
The final bell rings.
I was going to a house and watching the kid get on the bus and then going over to Seymour, watching the kid get unload. Forty-five minutes or less per run for a student is what it's supposed to be.
Okay.
Do you feel we'll be able to maintain that for 45 minutes as we move on?
I, I think if there are any runs right now that are over 45 minutes, I, I hope that we'd be able to look at at least the head counts or the geography account, make a necessary adjustment, but it's probably still early to tell, but I'm optimistic that we can.
Now, you mentioned in the morning, the bus coming to the middle school, what happens then when it has to get to the elementary school? Are the buses arriving on time at the elementary school this year?
We, it's improving. It's improving. I would say in the last week, we've, we've all been on time. The first few days were, were a work in progress.
But you feel comfortable it's, it's a work, it's going to work?
Yeah, I've been really happy with the way that I walked out today from bus dismissal, and there were probably four buses there, which is awesome. The first day, there was one, so it's a little.
The concern the board has is, you know, we've cut a bus, and we don't want to be making it more difficult for everyone in town, making kids late for school, and making it difficult for, for you guys when there's a bus issue.
And our elementary children are in, time for announcements, you get to their locker and.
Yes, they're getting, the last buses getting there about 8:25 at the last few days, so that gives them five minutes to get into the building, get into their classroom, the teachers will determine if they're going to go to their lockers or not before announcements.
Because announcements are about 8:30?
On the dot.
Forget the about, on the dot.
We don't waste any time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So with that extra swing of having to go to one building and then the other building, that's going to throw us over 45 minutes, isn't it? Doesn't it always? That's what I think.
Oh, because going, you're telling us Seymour going.
So I heard, so I heard 7:34 as a pickup for a student, and I didn't know if that student was going to Seymour or to Algrove. But let's assume that student's going to Seymour, I'm sorry, to Algrove, and then, you know, 8:25 seems to, you know, seems to be a good arrival time, that's 50 minutes.
No, she said 7:24 is the first pickup.
I thought it was 7:34.
No, she said 7:24 is the first pickup, and if they get there 8:25, then yes, that's an hour.
That's not working. I thought it was 7:34.
Well, it, I don't know.
I thought it coincided, I thought you were saying that, that a bus was arriving at 7:35 at the middle high school, and then was supposed to have picked someone up at 7:34 to go.
That's what I was saying, but with the times of 7:24 and 7:23 respectively, same message, different numbers.
No, no, it's.
But it does pertain to that one bus is getting to the school that late. Yep.
But what I'm looking at, or what I'm trying to pose, and I've always thought about this from, you know, we did have kids, we threw Nate on the bus for a couple of years. It's, it's gotta be like almost eight minutes, 10 minutes from the time the youngest children arrive at Seymour and then go back over Holcombe to get to school. Got to be at least five minutes.
From Seymour to Algrove?
Yes.
By the time that.
At least five minutes.
I would agree.
Yeah, we talked about that last year too, because that's like a.
More like eight minutes.
Probably eight to 10 minutes just to get from one school to the other, you know? Where does that fit into the number?
Your older brother or sister gets off the bus, you know, and they've had a 28-minute, 30-minute ride, but then they're getting off the bus, and you've got another eight, 10 minutes before you get a drop off, or whatever, I mean, and that's, but I understand the idea that you raised, Tim, you know, you've got, unfortunately, you've got the first on and then the last pickup, you know, because there are people at the farthest reaches of town.
Yep.
You know, and to Ricky's point, I don't think it's a bad idea, I just wouldn't know what to do if somebody changed, and, you know what I mean, like, to make a quick, I'm not sure if as a board we can say, well, you said you weren't going to ride it, so you can't unless we have 24 notice. I, I'm, I'm just not sure how that would work. I'm not opposed to looking into it, because I, I do know we have a, a good number of students that don't ride the bus.
I was even, I was trying to do some quick math, just based on student population, how many buses we have in session days, but I don't know final numbers for gas that we, because the way the contract's set up for the buses with pre-buying stuff. But I'm curious how much it would come down to per student, and actually give parents an option, we might be able to save money if we give a stipend. I've heard of districts doing that as well. You don't take the bus per day, and here's your stipend, and it actually ends up being less than what we pay to get that, to cut buses off.
There are districts, I used to live in one, that actually charge parents money if you're going to take the bus, and don't charge money if you don't.
Yeah, but I don't think in Connecticut, we can't do that. I think we have to provide transportation.
We can offer a stipend.
I think in Connecticut, we have to provide transportation. Massachusetts.
It was Massachusetts, correct.
So if we didn't have to, I'm sure a lot of districts would, would recharge a parent, you're right.
I don't want to be out in order.
Go ahead.
We do ask parents if they're going to be, let's say, your child's going to be daily to go to fill out a transportation form to state that. However, they can call, and we do call at 2:45 to say, oh, I need my child to ride the bus home today. I, I would have to talk to Laura to see how frequently that happens, but it happens enough that I, I know that it happens, and she writes them a pass. So what, we do have that information, but it could change every day at 2:30, 2:45.
If we had some data, I mean, if we have, if we knew, if we look at seats actually on average, how many seats are open, if we actually optimized how many buses we have, maybe it's actually five, not six, but optimized for how many students actually take it per day, and for those, if we had a kind of, an idea of an average number per day, instead of six full buses, we have five buses and a Sprinter van. And then, we're five square miles, or, or a very small town. If we have eight kids that got called for last minute, that way we don't ruin the rest of the bus routes, that van costs less than a bus. So maybe we have those eight students who got last minute, now they're going to need the bus today, maybe we send a van out with those eight kids. They're going to get home pretty quick.
I love your thinking out of the box, but you make me very nervous, I have to say. The logistical piece of that is I'm thinking it through as a.
No, it requires gathering a lot of base, baseline, and having an idea of what actually happens before we put anything in motion. But if we monitor this for the entire year, and we have an, on, on average, seven kids got called in per day for a last-minute change, and the max on a day was 12 or something. I mean, we can keep, we can keep stats for a year, and then see what we can do to optimize this next year, because I think there's room to save on budget as well as optimizing bus times, because we, our town is so small, there's not one point, the farthest point to the farthest point, you know how many kids we have, it's like, we got to do better than this.
Well, Ricky, you're right. I mean, I agree with that. When I look at these numbers at an hour a day, and that's pretty much what I thought it was last year, I mean, I had to check the math several times, I couldn't believe it, that's about 50 days the kids are spending on the bus, and they've got homework, and here we have people talking about a homework policy, we're, we're having kids in a small town like East Scrandby, where you're right, you could go across town, 50 days of school, of school they're wasting on a bus, I just can't comprehend that. And that's why my concern is, I thought it was an hour on the bus, when I see it's 45 minutes, I want to make sure we can do that, and, you know, they give us the feeling that they can, and I'm good with it.
Any of the schools, now, we can't do this because of sidewalks, but if you can walk anywhere in the town faster than you can get there on the bus, there's a problem.
If you live at the base of the middle high school, I think Tim was, if you live down at the base of the driveway, you're on a highway, I think you're scheduled for the bus, right? We don't have any walkers, because it's a highway and no sidewalks, you're right. And that's what it is. And that's why I'm not, I'm not sure, I hope it worked by cutting a bus. I hope this doesn't become a real problem. That's all good. Thanks for the feedback on that. Anyone else?
Hey, John? Did have one last one. So it's gotta happen, right? So what happens when the kid, when the student was supposed to take the bus and just forgot and weren't getting picked up? I asked that of both of you. What happens? I mean. So, you know, pick a grade, but pick a student absent-minded, they didn't get on the bus, they were supposed to be on the bus, they didn't.
That never happens.
Never happens. No, I know, okay.
Happens all the time, you call the parent. Call the parent, try to arrange for a pickup and do the best that we can, I can say.
And then you mentioned the, you can get a call at 2:15 saying, oh, throw, throw my, my student on the bus, throw my child on the bus.
It'd be interesting to look at the data too, if we really do run it, because I know for, in my case, I drop off both of my kids in the morning, but they both ride the bus in the afternoon. So we might find some skewed data, like the morning drop-off versus afternoon drop-off too.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be on the pre-school year form of, I mean, it's not yes or no bus, it's morning and afternoon, two separate things.
Yep. A couple of weeks in between sports has higher ridership, you know, between our sports seasons.
But if you offered a stipend, I'm sure they'd find a way.
Well, say, I have friends that only drive, and if they can't drive, they find someone to drive their kid, their kid never has taken the bus ever.
We've harped a few times, yep.
Just so bizarre.
Both ways?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, I, I think to, well, Ricky's point is, I like, because then we know Bus One, maybe not 80% of the kids are getting driven in, so we can take kids from Bus Two and put it to, but, you know, the routes would have to be changed if we knew that. I think it would help even out. I think there's always been certain routes that for years have always been the route that's been the issue, always, and it's not just one.
And that sounds like what Tim and Marcy are working on.
Oh, they are, I know they are.
Next several days is.
I think they are.
Okay. We've asked all those questions, so, you know, as we're just finishing the second week of school, or third, third week?
We just started our third week. It's the first one.
So we've made progress.
Full week.
Done.
Not really.
The only.
No, no, no.
The only other idea for efficiency that I'd have, but I was thinking actually going both one and one day, and just to kind of monitor, because I know Algrove is younger, and that's the kids I'm used to right now, and it's like herding cats. I was curious if it would be more efficient, rather than, I don't know how exactly it works at Seymour, if there are, if the kids are staged for when they pull in from Algrove, or if they're waiting for the buses to pull up, then, then load. If we know how many kids are on the bus, we, instead of having all six and we scatter them at Algrove, do we just say, hey, this many kids are at Algrove, let's just load them up and then deal with it at Seymour, like, because it's herding cats for the little kids. I have a feeling it's more organized on the, on the Seymour side, maybe. I might be wrong about that.
I don't understand.
Because they come in, at Algrove, it's in waves, it's not all six buses all at once, right?
No, they pick up at Seymour, all the buses pick up at Seymour.
At Seymour, then come, okay, so I'm backwards, okay. So are the, is Algrove kind of in lines where the buses will pull up, one that gets there, or do we wait for the buses and then call Bus One and Two, then Bus Three and Four, then Bus, because I could imagine all of them scattering at once, it's not fun.
I'm going to defer to actually the C sheets.
I mean, they, they, they walk out in lines, you know, per bus. I think they wait till the bus pulls up, because you don't want them waiting out there, but they're all ready to go by line with an adult.
Or do we get a.
Light them up in the gym, don't they?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember, I know that's Seymour, I'm.
I know, like, bad weather, it wouldn't work, but, I mean, just five minutes here and there, when we're this close to the policy and stuff, five minutes could make a difference. So is it, if it's nice weather, does Seymour call and be like, all right, all buses are en route, and then kids are just single file in lines per bus, and then they just go on?
We do text the bus numbers every day to Algrove, so they know the order the buses are arriving.
Okay.
So that does play into the way that they are dismissing the buses.
Okay, because I'm only, I hear the loudspeaker going if I'm picking up in the back, and it's kind of like in small waves, so I'm like, it could be, be waiting, or just get on the bus as soon as it pulls up. Trying to save some minutes here.
Yeah. I appreciate your updates, I mean, it gives us information when I get stopped in the grocery store about why the kids are late for school from some parents and things like that, and, you know, at least I know you guys are working on it, it is the beginning of the year, and take some time to iron it out with one less bus. Thank you. Back to you, Missy. That's all done.
Item 3C, middle school lunch arrangement. I've asked Tim to give a brief update on where we are with our middle school lunch.
Keeping me busy tonight, everyone. I prepared a statement to make sure that I could give some context on the why we do what we do. You know, up until this point, you know, I've had several conversations with Missy, you know, we had some Q and A at the sixth grade parent night back in, I think it was May 30. You know, PTO, we have parent, you know, suggest, after the meeting was over, you know, when you have your parent advisory, why don't you show what the lunchrooms look like, maybe pictures, describe the times, et cetera, et cetera. So we did that at parent night, I'm sorry, at that parent advisory night in February. But before that, the only correspondence I've received with respect to anything eating spaces related was back in April 2022, when we finally took off the masks. I can assure you with happiness that none of the decision-making that we have with respect to our current eating space has anything to do with the COVID pandemic. Just wanted to make sure that's clear before we continue, that I would like to say COVID 80 times just to drive home, I don't want to hear the word COVID anymore. It has nothing to do with what we're doing. So, but before we get to do what we do, I'd like to provide some context on why we do what we do. So 20 years ago, and Bob and Amanda were there for this, I was hired in 2004, aged 28, and I came from a district that had, I think the lunch waves for teachers and for students were something like 45 minutes long, which was killer, awesome. Then I came to East Scrandby, did a period five biology class that was split. I had 24 minutes teaching, 24 minutes lunch, and 24 minutes teaching again. I had never seen anything, experienced anything like that, which as an aside, at that time was officially the shortest lunch break I had ever had in my entire life. I worked as a grocery bagger, worked at Quasie, drove to Quasie Queen, I had a whole bunch of jobs, but it was always a half hour. And then I became an administrator, where it was like, what, two minutes, give or take, you know, tongue in cheek. Anyway, but then, you know, even though the students and I only had 24 minutes, shared minutes, it had to be that way. I was, I was informed that it had to be that way, because the teachers were tethered to the students, and the students were tethered to the teachers. Students had to have a place to go. So even though I was used to, you know, having a long lunch wave, I respected that and understood that. It was also meant to be a way to keep the eating spaces to be not overcrowded, right? We had three waves, they could have given us two waves at the time if they wanted to, and gave us a longer lunch, but they felt that it was overpacked. At least that's what was informed to me when I first got hired in '04. So fast forwarding to July 1st of 2022, Public Act 22-0080, Section 14 mandated that all schools give teachers at least 30 minutes of uninterrupted time to eat lunch. It's a state law. So we could no longer do what we used to do, and we had to design a new work schedule for our teachers and by extension to students whose schedule is tethered. We add some numbers and problem solving, for those who know me, they know I'm a math nerd, and I love to do puzzles, okay? But we needed to consider the time and space constraints. And so Tony and I, because our buildings are tethered to each other, he's a high school principal and a middle school principal, our bell schedule is the same, we have shared staff, and we have some classes that might have middle and high together. So we started going through the options, we were tasked, figure it out. Option one, having teachers eat for 30 minutes by law, and giving students the same three 24-minute lunch waves that they had always had. To be blunt, this is a, this is a quick study, this couldn't and won't work, because we would have nowhere to send the students to when they were done with their waves. Students and teachers have to have the same eating time, and then just for perspective, imagine if I had my biology students hanging out in the hallway while I was finishing my 30-minute lunch, when they only had 24. And then the room that they just left is being filled by the next 24-minute wave.[1747.62] It's not something that statistically we can do. And I'm not one that wants to say can't, won't, but it's mathematically impossible to be able to do that. And even if we had like this magic money tree, maybe we hit the mega bucks tomorrow. We were talking about for the meeting again. And we could hire a limitless staff of lunch aids and by extension, maybe magically have a peaceful budget season coming up. It still wouldn't work because we still have nowhere to send the students to. These teachers need to have their lunch. So option two, we may, we looked at making three waves at a length of 30 minutes each, which would make period five significantly longer than each of the other six periods. And by extension, would make those six other periods even shorter. You're literally losing hundreds of minutes of instruction over the course of the year when you add that up of 182 days. Not an ideal option. Option three, which is when we tried in quarter one of 2223 and then stopped in quarter two. And the current eighth graders remember this. I've asked a few of them anecdotally. I haven't put a formal survey out there or anything like that, but just, just for conversational purposes. We had put all the students in the same eating space for the two waves that are now 30 minutes instead of 24, which meant that half of the middle school was in the same room eating together. We had as many as 110 students in the commons during lunch compared to the 70-ish that we were used to under the three-wave model. It was loud. It was crowded. It was restricted. It was uncomfortable. And in my professional opinion as principal, it was unsafe. And I then even better understood the good reason why I had a broken period five back in 2004. There was logic to that. For visual sake, please do feel free, and I do invite the board, any parents who are listening tonight on TV, please feel free to come to open house tomorrow night. It's tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30. And imagine moving the nine tables that are currently in the middle school gym to the commons to get an image in your head about what crowded looks like. Option four, the construct of the past two years. Keep it at two waves, but move some of the students in a different place to eat. We've made that space the gym as it is the only space that is large enough to accommodate this. Over the past two years, the sixth graders have eaten in the gym and the seventh and eighth graders have eaten in the commons. The current eighth graders will likely tell you that this move, while maybe not perfect, was much better than having everyone together when they were in sixth grade. Option five, which not coincidental, I should say coincidentally started today. We started the year off going over routines, norms, and procedures. So it's still an experimental phase since day one. We are keeping the two waves and keeping the two rooms, but rather than assign all the sixth graders to one room and the other two grades to the commons. And to be clear, we did those assessments based on numbers, not based on developmental level. In other words, we didn't just say grade six stinks to be, go to the gym. We allowed all students, grade six to eight, to choose what room they go to each day. We started that process with a caveat that once one of the rooms is full, the students have to go to the other room. So if the gym fills up and there's no more seats left, they have to go to the commons. If there's commons fills up and there are no seats left, they go to the gym. And that's new each day. We also have a caveat that they can't race or body check down the hallway. So we had a little bit of chaos this morning before wave one, that while that was a little chaotic anticipation of the change, I'm happy to report that students from grade six, seven, and eight were sitting together in both spaces. Actually, the seventh graders were racing to get down to the middle school gym and I had to tell them to slow down then. They wanted a big eight-seater. Anyway, so that's our current construct. And that all said, and before we undergo further discussion, I want to thank you first for all listening. Speaking as a father of a seventh grader in my building, one Emmett failing would be upset that I'm mentioning his name out loud, but I'm doing it anyway. He ate in the gym all of last year and as someone as a professional who was in that room watching him eat and laugh with his friends at his table and also speaking as a basketball coach and doing basketball coaching for over 10 years, folding up those darn tables in the gym was annoying. I moved them two nights a week for practice. Knowing that there's no perfect option, just like having a broken period five in 2004, I will state here publicly, I personally and professionally believe this to be the best option in consideration of all the parameters of time, space, and law. Naturally, I know it's impossible to please everyone, but please rest assured that everything we do as educators, we do for the students. I anticipate also that there are going to be stakeholders who are dissatisfied with the current construct. I would urge you to reach out to me directly. Call me, do a site visit, email me, make an appointment. I'll talk you through, walk you through, I'll give you a tour. You know, if you want to collaborate with me to find another solution that you feel is better than the one we've got, I'm here. I encourage the entire school community furthermore to reach me directly, not just on this topic, but any topic. I feel like that there were, I'll just leave it at that. If you feel the need to bring a concern to my attention, please do. I similarly encourage parents to contact teachers directly if there's a classroom concern. Either way, I'm happy to collaborate and work with folks. I look forward to discussing this further as necessary. Thank you.
One thing we started, I think this started many years ago. When I started here as a principal 19 years ago, there was a, looking at a schedule and going to an eight-period schedule and that kind of went away. We are reinvigorating the schedule because many school districts, not all, there's, there's no all for anything, okay? That's just, there's no all for anything. But many do a full period for lunch. You go to an eight-period day. This way, all of your periods, you can have, you know, period three, four, and five are lunch waves and they're all even periods, which allows for some more flexibility. That's an option if we want to look at a whole kind of six, 12, you know, schedule, which we are doing that.
The district that I came from that had 45-minute lunch waves was one of those.
That's what happens, correct. Your lunch wave ends up being a full period. Mr. Welsh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up. End of meeting.
No, it's okay. I just had a couple at this.
Sure.
So I have the numbers right in my head. So the six, sixth to eighth grade enrollment?
Is, is, uh, we got 64 sixth graders, 87 graders, that's what, 144? Then add another almost 80, I think it's like 78 eighth graders. We're relatively larger than usual. Our seventh and eighth grader breathing.
So on any given day about 2:20. Sometimes they stay home.
But I think that, but I'm trying to remember the sheet in my head.
No, it's okay.
The current lunch waves, wave one has 110 total students, wave two has 108. So the exact number should be 218.
And you're looking at two waves.
Based on all this, that that is what we have, is the two waves.
30 minutes. And then the capacity in the commons versus, would that, would it be safe to say that, would it be safe to say that typically would fill up first, your seventh graders aside?
Well, interestingly enough though, we had students leaving the gym or the commons today.
I think you mean the other way around.
The gym was full.
Oh, because the kids went to the gym first?
The gym was the place to be today, sort of.
Today.
Sort of.
Tomorrow might be a different day. But it was nice to see one particular sixth grader in mind who was hanging with the seventh grade fellows. They obviously played either soccer or basketball. Again, they were enjoying each other's company. Now I was in the gym and some other sixth graders who just wanted to sit near the window and have a book, which was also cool.
And then the last one, which sort of was the one that puzzled me the most, was they decide where they're going to go that day?
What we're trying, I am optimistic, but, you know, it's an experiment.
I mean, we're not looking to, you know, maybe get to a point where like people say what their preference is and kind of stick with it. Kind of like getting on the same bus every.
Yeah, I know. At the same time, there's.
Just so we know where people are.
We're trying to at least, you know, give the options so students have a choice.
Yeah, okay.
You know, then from day to day, you know, you might not like the seventh grader that you said you might have that day, so you might want to go play to the sixth grade, but we didn't assign seating.
Right, and the capacity of the two areas is such that, you know, it's hard to say that.
I think the seat numbers that we left it at added up to a little bit more than 110. So there's, I think, 35 to 36 seats in the gym and somewhere around 75 to 80 in the commons.
That was at the capacity of the commons, just down 75. I'm perplexed. You gave us a lot of, a lot of information. But about two years ago, you gave us information to a parent letter when a parent wrote a letter that the people didn't want to change the lunchroom. And now, now it's different. They'd had three lunches in that school for probably three, four decades until COVID came. And then COVID came and naturally, the right thing was done splitting kids up. When COVID left, I think many board members thought that, and parents thought that we were going back to normal. If there's been one complaint, I hear from people, it's been the lunchroom. And pretty much just, you know, at one time, the sixth grade, when they came up, was a transition period and they were supposed to be treated a little bit more like elementary kids than middle school kids. And putting sixth graders in a lunch, in a gym, and then they, what do they do when they're done eating? They don't get to go outside at all?
Well, we're going outside now.
Well, what have they done for the past two years after they were done eating? Did they get to go outside or not?
Not as much as outside as I'd like them to.
That doesn't answer the question. Did they get to go outside?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, okay. That's part of my concern. I put my, I could think back to middle school and other people can. You know, if I had to sit through classes all day and then go to the lunchroom and sit in that lunchroom and not move when I was done, sit at that seat, I would be a problem for periods six and seven. And I only taught middle school for 30 years and I've seen kids that have problems in periods six and seven and some middle school kids have problems in periods one, two, three, four, or five. They, they need activity. I would like, I know you're a data guy and I'm a data guy, but I would like to see the data that shows we're here because we have to improve student achievement. And I find this to be a freebie to let kids go outside and socialize like, like they did for decades at the middle school. You just made a good point. You were a basketball coach for 10 years and you have to move the tables. My concern is that's a liability issued with Board of Education at night when parents have to come in and move tables. And I've had basketball parents complain that they have to do that, parent groups. And back, back in the day, I was coaching in the middle school. You know what the kids, when the kids got done in the lunchroom eating, they went to the gym and played basketball. And you know what? We had two high school teams that went to a state championship. And now we have kids that they'll never see a basketball through middle school. Not we, but the Board of Education previously to us cut all middle school sports. They used to have a competitive program and they used to play basketball every day in gym or go outside. And if they can't go outside and blow off some steam, I don't know what we're doing wrong. I mean, teachers should get 10 minutes. There's no question. But the kids should be penalized. In our policy, Tim, for a principal, it says organize the playground, lunchrooms, and new hour in the best interest and safety of the children. And I know some parents talked about kids wanting to do a petition. They were told they couldn't do a petition. I never asked. I don't know why they couldn't do a petition about a lunchroom. I mean, that's the type of thing I'm going to ask the student representatives to give us a voice of the kids so that we know how they feel.
I don't know what you're talking about, the petition, why they can't.
Well, I, I think there's been lots of phone calls and emails about the lunchroom over the past two years. And again, you made a comment about hiring people. We've never cut anyone into middle school. So I don't understand why we don't have people to supervise lunch. Aren't teachers doing one period of supervisory duty every day?
They are. But here's the thing.
Is everyone doing it? I mean, you asked for help. I don't want to come and get help. I mean, that's what we hire good administrators like you guys will do. But we've been told it can't be done, it can't be done, but it was done for 40 years.
I don't want to be contentious with you.
Okay.
But there are some inaccuracies here. The COVID pandemic has nothing to do with why we have the students currently in the lunchroom, in the gym.
If there wasn't COVID, Tim, we'd have three lunch waves like we've always had.
No, we wouldn't. During COVID, when we did separate students because we needed space and we did use that gym to separate kids for space for COVID, that was done for COVID back then when COVID wasn't a thing. All right? And then in April 22, after the masks came off, eventually we had the students back in the commons together right at the end of that school year. It wasn't right away like a flip of the switch, but we moved them back into the commons. That following fall, after the law passed about 30 minutes instead of 24 minutes for us, we tried having all the students in the, in the commons. We didn't go back to the gym. It had nothing to do with the pandemic, zero to do with the pandemic.
Well, did you have two lunch periods? You can't fit them all, you can't fit them all in two lunch periods. We all know that.
You remember like the bell schedule too. I better give you a pop quiz from 2014 if I remember correctly. You probably still remember the numbers like 1228, 119, 210. You know when that bell's going to go. Amanda probably knows this student back then, right? But those, those numbers to keep the periods at 48 minutes and get it to maximize instruction, the only way to do the lunch waves with the bell construct that we have and with that law is to have two 30-minute lunch waves. Everything else is dependent on that. That's a parameter. That's, you know, as a chemist, as a science teacher, that's by limiting reagent. I have to go to that first. I have to abide by that and follow that. That has nothing to do with what happened with the pandemic other than the similarity that the room was the same room when it was pandemic versus the option that we have now because we're trying to abide by that 30-minute law. But it's not because of the pandemic. Zero to do with pandemic. It's that law. And in order to fit the blocks of time and fit the students, I believe I've adhered to that policy as principal in the best interest of the students. I feel like there were students who were scared to go into that room when there were 110 students in there.
Oh, I agree. If you have two lunches, I don't want to be contentious about it either. I just feel that we should be looking at what's the best practice for student achievement. And I would like to see any data we have that shows that getting fresh air, seeing the light of day. Some of those kids are in rooms with no windows all morning. You know what? The teachers got 30 minutes and we can all go do what we want to do. Again, the kids don't have a voice and I would just like to see them after they eat. They should be able to go outside and from what I understand, they have to go outside and sit. They can't run around and that's not for a sixth grader, what they did when they were sixth graders in the elementary school.
Sixth grader's playing tag on the laptop.
Oh, good, good. I'm glad, I'm really pleased to hear that. That's good, Lisa.
I think Lisa has.
This is a question that I presume would have implications for contracts and all those other things. But when the state changed the rules about how long teachers had to have lunch, did we as a board or a district at all consider adding those six minutes to a school day? Fully appreciating that that doesn't happen overnight. Because it sounds like if the 30 minutes is what has caused how we had to restructure the teachers and the students, if we had had those six minutes added to the day, could we have kept the three waves as they were?
If you were to, I'd have to look at.
Like if I was hearing you correctly, that would be fair.
My reaction, I want to say is yes, but I'd have to look at it.
And I don't.
You're right. We, we just were never told of the law and it changes and so we weren't able to negotiate it at the time. But negotiating an extra 10 minutes on the school day would be extremely costly at this time. When we gave 10 minutes, maybe that was the time, but we never knew anything about that until, you know, I think the lunch thing came across. We never discussed that. We never discussed that. I don't think the negotiating team discussed those 10 minutes. I don't think we knew anything about the state law. And you're right, and that, that's impacted all this and it bothers me that that's impacted all this. The teachers, and they should get 10, they should get 30 minutes for lunch. I think they certainly should.
Would I have a six-minute, right, a six-minute difference?
If everyone has a supervisory period and we haven't cut staff, except maybe this year, we may have cut a few people. I don't know the impact on the middle school. There should be enough people to do lunch duty. There just should be and have three lunches. And I think it can work out and mathematically and scientifically, I don't buy it, Tim, because the story I'm hearing tonight's different than a response to a parent two years ago as to the teachers wanted to keep it the way it was. You gave good reasons tonight, but those are all after the fact. Those are after people have been complaining for two years and we were told that it was going to be fixed. And I don't see it fixed. I mean, what we're trying to play around with seems to be very confusing for all you guys. And, you know, I don't think the board should be blamed for it, yet we're going to get blamed for it. We're trying to speak for the kids and all these changes are just making it more difficult for everyone. And, and reasons for things to go wrong and I think safety, someone to get hurt. Because one day I want to eat in the gym, one day I want to eat in the commons and back and forth in arguments. I just don't see it working. And I think we've got two years to fix it since COVID and I, I do relate it to COVID. I'm sorry. I do relate. I mean, we should have had this discussion before we kept the two lunches.
I guess that was the point that I opened up with, really. Like I, if you're getting this, this voluminous chain of emails and phone calls and such.
You've said it publicly that you've had emails. You've told the superintendent that was the information we received. Otherwise, I wouldn't have this conversation.
Regarding this now, this construct now, students in the gym now, I have not received any conversations about this other than in these settings that I gave you, the PTO, the advisory. And I thought that parent advisory meeting was well received. You know, at least it appeared to be that way. But I haven't heard any, you know, contention on what we were doing after I had that meeting. I had some sixth grade parents asking questions at the orientation that night about this construct that's not COVID. Did I have a lot of parent complaints at the COVID time when we were with COVID with the gym of being applied for COVID space? Yes, absolutely. And yes, I did communicate about that back then. This is different now. This is about the state law. And professionally, I.
But you have problems with 10 minutes of the state law negatively impacting a kid that needs some exercise. And even with the state law, they're not going outside and running around. You're saying you're just beginning to do. You're saying they're just beginning to do that now. That's, that's what I'm troubled with. Go ahead, John.
But I would throw this on top of that whole concept that it's an additional six minutes. And so what we need to focus on is taking the former 24-minute lunch, which I don't know how a kid does the 24-minute lunch, chats up everybody that they need to chat up and then go and shoot hoops. But with a 30-minute lunch, I could see where, you know, you could gobble down your sandwich and flirt with people and chit chat with your friends and, and maybe go outside for 10 minutes. I could see that as being a possibility. So, I mean, from my way of looking at it and trying to remember back to middle school, which was a long time ago, boy, 30 minutes would have been great. And we would have probably gone outside. We would have, you know, maybe gone down to the other end of the gym and, you know, shot hoops and done whatever it is people do. Warp.
Like I said, the gym is not ideal.
No, it's not.
But in my estimation, looking at all the stuff that we have here, it really is the best option that I can come up with.
From what you laid out, the only, the only thing that I would say is, doesn't seem... I would probably want to focus on having students be assigned to whatever location they're going. Be able to change it, but not have a, you know, gosh, where are you going today? I don't know, but it'll be fine.
Well, the spaces are right next to each other and that was my push to give the kids options.
You know, you're, you want to go and you want to hang out with a friend that you're meeting from another class or another grade or whatever. And then you're told, oh, sorry, you have to go over there. I don't know, it just seems like there could be a little bit more than just, you know, who gets out of their classroom, who gets led out of their classroom first.
The current construct is, it came to fruition with the conversations that I've had with Missy. You know, how can we incorporate elements of choice and not just make a sixth grader sit in the gym all year long? And so even though the gym, it's not ideal, at least giving the choice from day to day, you know, and we're going to see how it works. It might not work. We might have to go back to a different construct. But we're trying because we want to give students a chance to choose.
What type of schedule does middle school run?
Seven-period bell schedule. And the periods are all even. So the five-minute, sorry, the fifth period is, it's got some adjustments to it to allow for a lunch wave in a class or a class then a lunch wave. It used to be with the three waves, for context, it used to be lunch wave, class, class. Or class, lunch wave, class. Or class, class, lunch wave.
Seven periods inclusive of the lunch or seven periods not? So eight total with lunch or seven total with?
Seven total.
Seven total classes plus a lunch block.
Is there a mandate or policy regarding the length of the periods? Because of seven with the lunch, so that means six others. If you reduce each period by one minute, there's your six minutes.
It's more than six minutes because it's, it's the...
Oh, if it's 24, then you'd add six to make it a half an hour. So you'd have, it wouldn't be seven equal, it'd be six and then 130.
It's actually 24 minutes because you've got three waves times the six minutes plus the spaces to walk through the hallways, which is three minutes.
Okay. But my point was there's six, six periods outside of the lunch period. If you reduce each by one minute, there's six minutes. I don't know if there's a mandate of minimum length of period or anything.
There is a, you're supposed to have a certain amount of instructional minutes over the course of the year. So if you were to eat into the 48-minute classes, and I'm not sure what that number is.
We do have the two bonus days that are not required by the state, right? So that might be an easy one.
Their bonus, all right, yes. Yeah, so I would say though, like just to look at it, if we're doing quick math here, it's six minutes times the three lunch waves. If that's what we're doing, it's going to 30-minute lunch waves times three back to extend the period by, that was option two.
Okay. So it's actually 18 minutes total for the day.
And then you're adding more travel time in between them. It's another six minutes for the three minutes of hallway space. So it adds up to 24 minutes divided by the six periods, the four minutes off of each period per day times 182 days. Which adds up to four times 182, that's what, 527.
And fifth period's also a class period?
Yep.
So it's not exclusively lunch or whatever class then if, so that's why in some of our conversations, looking at entirely different bell schedule might actually be the best for our district, 612 right now, for a variety of reasons. It'd also help our, our lab situations being in conflict with other courses. We've increased our labs, you know, drastically over the years for our science lab classes. So there's a, I think certainly it would behoove us to kind of reinvigorate that scheduling committee, which the middle and high school administration is doing. And we will be asking for Board of Ed members, anybody who would like to sit on it, certainly is welcome to.
Would you say for an eight days, I mean, eight periods?
That could be an option. I mean, there's a lot of options.
Now you're talking solutions, sure. I mean, I'm sorry to get upset, but we spend a lot of time and concern about how students have incept back and how important social and emotional learning is.
Amen.
And I would think most middle school data would support that they need fresh air, they need a little bit of exercise, they need to see the light of day, they need to move around. That's just the middle school makeup of a kid and we're not doing that. And I believe, you know, you talk about solutions, that there are solutions to getting back to making it work that would improve social, emotional learning. Kids can finish lunch really, like John said, go in the gym and shoot baskets. That makes a difference when they can't shoot baskets. And I still have the concern at night when, when someone's playing basketball in a gym that has lunch tables in it that we've put there. I know when you go to high school gym, everything has to be covered with material so kids don't get hurt. Tables and chairs aren't, that's just a liability concern. But social, emotional learning, that's a freebie for kids to be able to have some free time. We, we all value our lunchtime. We all know how important that is. I think it's important for kids too. And unless there's some data that shows otherwise, I'm going to speak out in favor of the kids and of the parents that come and complained about it. Tim, no one likes to complain to the principal. No, no, I tell Missy, no one wants to go to her, they grab us in the grocery store. They grab me, you know, I go to ball games, you may get some, they'll grab me, they know me and they'll bring things up. And I'm glad to hear what you said tonight. I'm glad to see that there's some changes going on. But social, emotional learning's important. And again, we have people, everyone is supposed to do, I guess, a duty period, supervisory period. And I don't think, and I don't want to look at who's doing what, but I know if I did, I would see holes where we could have people cover lunch duties. I just believe that. And I don't want to get into it, it's not my job. We make the policy and we hire good people like you.
I want to be clear though, all right, and this is the last I'll say about this. The lunch duty coverage with respect to a teacher watching students eat food also has nothing to do with this construct. It's not affecting whether I put people in the gym versus into the commons. It's a matter of the teacher who's receiving the students when they're done eating. That's the part, that's the constraint. Not the number of teachers. I could, I could put more teachers if I wanted to. I have a good setup as I have it and I have minutes even distributed as best as I can to run and function my bill. But as far as like having more lunch duty people, more pairs of eyes on the kids while they're eating, that's not the constraint. It's where to send the students when they're done eating. That schedule block, they have to have a home to go to. So if teachers have a 30-minute lunch and students have a 24-minute lunch, there's a discrepancy in where I can send those students. Location, never mind the hoop. I mean, where are they going to go? Just hang out in the hallway or go to like a separate room, like a waiting room until a teacher's done eating? The one that they're supposed to see scheduled, which is in the time they're not eating, the student set is.
Yeah.
It's about the schedule construct with the teachers who are receiving students.
Well, I get that. And that's, that's why I think summer is used for scheduling, that's all. I just, it's hard for me to believe in a small district like this that that becomes such a big deal. I mean, I've worked in big districts where it's not such a big deal. And I know there's some things in a small district that are even more difficult because it's a small district.
Not collective effort or...
I'm good. I mean, you gave us some good information. It sounds like things will change. And I know it's not easy and I commend you for being in the middle school because I know that grade level is a challenging group and it's an important group. An important group to keep them online so they go to high school and they have a good career from there on. That's my comment. Anyone else from the board?
I just have one. One, I really appreciate everything that you're trying to do. I know it's, it's a challenge. I'm excited to see what the future holds in regards to like how the periods are going to change and, you know, be able, being able to have the kids be active. You know, my kid is now in the sixth grade and it's quite a challenge.
I saw a lot of them today, in a good way. He wasn't sent to the principal's office or anything like that.
And he came home and he was all excited that he was able to pick where he could sit and he was able to sit with some friends and he wasn't, didn't think he could sit with, so that was cool. I guess my only other question would be, now that, you know, it's starting to get a little bit cooler outside, do we have a plan for them to be active inside?
We could use the other half of the gym for that purpose.
Okay.
You know, the air and basketball knocking over a Stanley bottle is definitely an issue. You know, that's something that I, you know, would really prefer to not happen. But, you know, we'll have to keep that in mind as we're moving in.
Do we still have classrooms off the gym that are being utilized?
We have two, yeah, we have two locker rooms that have been converted into classrooms that are off of the gym. So that also is a concern. You make a good point.
And they are being utilized for like the middle school classrooms or is that high school coming up?
Spanish.
Yeah, Mrs. Reloff is the Spanish teacher and she's in locker room one and Lori Nelson is our BI interventionist is in locker room two. They're no longer used as lockers or classrooms. Literally the lockers have signs on them like for like storage. There's like what used to be, it sounds weird, it really does sound weird, but there's like a shower stall that now has like flexible seating in it and the students are just going to sit there on a particular day.
Rock table scissors.
Yeah, totally. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So it also sounds like even a bigger issue at the same token where we're so confined to like a very tight space that we're having at Seymour and Algrove and we're expanding.
Yeah, we are.
So it's...
And the needs of our students are expanded too, which is why you have to have the specialized spaces. You know, we used to have a room called the multipurpose room. Now one half of it is Joel Ziff's space and then it happens Jenna Clark's space. And it's actually in capital plans to put a wall between them. But right now it's just bookshelves, very much like it used to be at the high school in Seymour before, that's renovations.
And in the middle school.
That's right.
Wasn't that good?
Any brainstorming I would love to help out with as far as like whenever winter comes and keeping these kids moving, because I know these little crazy brains sometimes need to keep moving as much as they can.
Believe me, I'm just... They had to choose a trampoline or a foot.
Any close trampoline in there?
Closing comment. You said that tomorrow night, 6:00 to 7:30 is your open house?
That's correct.
And I don't need to make an appointment to have you show me the gym, the common room?
Open house?
Because it's been, it's been eight years since I've been in there.
Ron, now.
Yeah. I'll see you tomorrow night.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Item D, missing policy 3453.
Sure. Tim, thank you for being here tonight. I knew you would be the best to respond. All right, school activity funds, this is the third read. There are some red lines that show the changes from the second read, essentially incorporating the feedback from the last board. So what is added is, we added under student activity, class accounts, students of the named class account. We made that a little bit more specific. We added the current language regarding the audit, which are, it is part of the audit, it is part of the audit report, but we will have a more focused report to student activities. And that was the feedback from the second read.
Did you mention that? Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yes.
Any... Any questions in the board? Any questions?
I know we've gone back and forth a lot of times on this. At the end, where does the intent of the remaining class, not the end, will be provided to the principal by July 1st following graduation? If the intent of class fund expenditure is not provided by July 1st following graduation, all unexpendable funds will be transferred to the high school general fund at that time? Like immediately? Or are we waiting until the end of those five years when they haven't been done anything with and then they go back? I thought when we were writing this, we were intending...
It would be at the time, not after the five years.
So if they haven't picked anything by July 1st, that was our intention at that point, right?
Right, so one thing that we're doing, so with the last class that graduated.
Right.
Okay, Mr. DeMello, the principal with the advisor, right? Here's your funds from our business manager, here's what's left. There's still a few expenditures that needed to be cleared.
Right.
You know, late graduation stuff and this and that. But they had an idea of what it was, they knew how they wanted to spend their money. We gave them the final amount once everything is cleared and they gave us what they wanted to do with their funds. So if... So it's prompted by the principal?
Right. And we, when we were setting this up, the idea is that this is not going to get to this point anyways, right? They're all going to decide what they want to do before July 1st. So this idea that July 1st rolls and they haven't decided what they're going to do, it's going to immediately get moved over. That's, was just what I was...
That's the way I read it.
That's, okay. We don't need to say at that time.
And the only thing I would say is that between that sentence ending high school general fund period and the sentence starting if, all I'd say is that that's a separate paragraph. So there's no confusion at all that that's, that sentence is intended, is intended to clarify anything in the preceding paragraph.
So the red line, that second red line if?
Yep, yep. That's a separate paragraph because that is a separate, separate point being made. Because I would read that, you could read that almost as, wait a second, five years and July 1st.
And I know that it's not what we intended, but given that they're so close to each other, it sort of applies it.
You have to pull that off into a different paragraph. It's a separate section of the policy, if you will.
Thank you.
My input would be, I just, I never, in any policy language, I don't like the word by. It's very ambiguous. On or before or prior to? Or...
Prior to is fine.
If you don't want it inclusive. So by can be inclusive or exclusive depending on who you ask. Very ambiguous. Does it include July 1st or not? Just technical, grammatical.
No later than?
That's inclusive then, right?
No later than July 1st. Can it go on July 1st? Yes, it can. It was not later than July 1st.
Correct. I just don't like by. By is very up in the pile.
Okay, that's, any other edits? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a fourth reading next meeting.
I don't think we need a fourth reading.
Can we just?
We can just go on it?
We can accept the corrections.
We can accept the edits, okay. Corrections and we can put it on for recommended actions at the next meeting.
Then we'll do that for recommended actions for next meeting now, okay? Good with that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, item E, capital plan.
Okay, capital plan. In your package, you received a copy of the draft. This is only a draft. I'd like to have this to our board in September so we have, you know, time to look at it, discuss it, and still another board meeting, you know, before it needs to go to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance, in their September meeting, if I'm remembering their activity calendar correctly, they're looking for an overview like in September about kind of what's the big capital request? Is it similar to the last plan? Has anything really changed? And then I believe the October plan, we, October Board of Finance meeting, we present our capital plan. And November is when it gets voted on by the Board of Finance. So the, we have one major item that's on our capital plan and that's the roof that is over the 2001 addition of the high school. That was slated to be this year. We are able to do some repairs on the drains and we have about another two years is that our facilities is pretty confident that the roof will be good for another two years. So what happened was, this year with having a 2.1 million cost, we moved a lot of things out of capital to keep the year light with capital requests. Now that we're moving the roof down two years, we had to kind of reexamine the needs and shift things around to keep two years from now light with capital requests. Does that make sense so far? I will tell you, we have, I think as a board have been excellent in terms of our capital planning and that is thanks to our facilities subcommittee as well as Ray Carlson, our facilities director for the town who obviously oversees the school as well. We have been able to go every single year with the exact requests that we put on our plan in September, that was approved, and we have been able to take items off at the end of the year because we have searched through grants, some things we might have used non-lapsing funds or what have you. So we have, we spend a lot of time in our capital plan. Summer is the time where we sit as a facilities and look at the requests from our facilities manager, from our principals of our building, as well as our technology department, because those are the areas that tend to give the capital, capital needs. So I'm not sure the best way that you would like me to go through this. I wanted to make sure you had it a few days ahead of time to look through. I can certainly go over kind of the current, current year 2425 and 2526. Again, this plan is fluid and even though it technically gets approved, and I'm gonna put that in air quotes, by the Board of Education, and then approved by the Board of Finance, the funding is not approved until after a town meeting where the community votes. Okay, so the plan might get kind of approval or a blessing, but we still need to request the money, if you recall. We've done that twice a year for the last couple of years, usually in November, and then in June is usually the larger request. Okay, and then it goes to the town and the town votes on all of our capital. So we approve as a board, the plan, the focus, the priorities, and the Board of Finance tends, you know, will do the same. But it's not, it's not automatic money once we get this approved. Okay? And sometimes things do shift. So would you like me just to kind of run down 2425, 2526? Because those are like the, and then I can summarize the rest of the years?
Are there any changes on there from the past?
There, so we.
What else are changes?
So we had to change because this year was the 2.1 million, right? So we moved that out two years. So what we did is cameras, our security cameras, we had $40,000 over the next.
I'm sorry. We moved the 2.1 from.
2425.
And we've moved it out to 2627.
Correct.
And we haven't increased that.
We have not.
Which it's two years.
Correct.
We're kicking the can, kicking the can, don't we need to increase the volume of the can?
We always have.
And then, and then was that, was that a, is that a real number?
That was absolutely a real number. That the roofs was assessed, we had the company come out that did the last roof for our middle school, high school. So that was a real number.
What did it cost us to get them patched for two years?
I want to say 30. We used, I think, non-lapsing funds for that. So may I go down 2425 and just try to highlight something?
Yeah, sir.
Okay, sure. There's a $40,000 for security cameras. We had $40,000 over five years. What I did for this year is because we have a grant through, it's not DAS, it's a security grant for cameras. We will be able to get reimbursed, a reimbursement rate I believe is about 46%. So by asking for the funds upfront, we can complete, we're actually very good with our security and our cameras. We need to change some of our analog to digital cameras and this would provide us a few areas that gives a little bit more coverage in some blind spots and some exterior. So by doing the 40,000, again, we had this in our five-year plan, I'm just moving it to one year, current year, and we can, we're going to be contacting the state again for our grant just to be sure that these cameras will be reimbursable to 46%.
And that's the homeland?
That is.
Is there an end date of when we can adjust that request? In case we think of anything else?
Well, Mrs. Heine actually called, I don't know, two weeks ago, just as, because we've already made some shifts in it. Yeah. I'm not looking to add funds for what we didn't already, you know, budget for. The grant came after we budgeted for cameras, it seems to fit in, it seemed to kind of make sense to us to say, well, we have this grant, let's, you know, move the cameras in. The cameras were budgeted before we even applied for the grant. Or, I won't say budgeted, the cameras were planned for before we applied for the grant.
I was just thinking if it's outside of already approved capital, but if it's, if we come up, if somebody comes up with something for, something that would definitively increase the safety of our schools, I would not be opposed to using non-lapsing if it's 46% match, if we can add to it.
Reimbursement, so we'd have to spend the money first and then it's a reimbursement?
Yep. But that'd be something I'd consider if it was definitively increased security. Like if there's blind spots that we want to add to, or I know the license plate readers were.
Yep, that's part of the conversation.
Yep, so definitely something I'd consider. I know we're past the capital stage already, so.
I was curious why the flashing school zone signs are our responsibility?
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that was fun.
And this has, no, no, that's, I was gonna talk about that because that's a new item to, Chairperson Pass, with your question about what's new. As part of our district-wide safety committee, Seymour parents have expressed a concern over speeding in front of Seymour School. Marcy, our Principal Lukinbach, has requested from the town to have some painting on the road, slow school zone, you see that places. Because it's a state road, we can't do that, we need to get permission from the state to do that. First select person contacted whom she needed to, they came out to do an assessment and our flashing lights are what they called out of compliance. So when I asked about what they're out of compliance, they're too far away from the school and the flashers are not in the right position. Yes. I asked a simple question, well, can we just move them closer to the school? But the ours that we currently have are power, so power is pulled. The cameras, the flashers here are solar. So the cost to change our power would be more than purchasing. So my last question, I am waiting for an answer, is are we sure this is our responsibility to purchase and not maybe the state, since it is a state road?
Who stole them in the first place, the state or others?
These go, I don't think anybody has that history. I tried asking.
I'm just stunned that this is the school board's responsibility to budget for signs for safety.
I would almost bet that it was the state.
Well, then they put them out of compliance, they can fix it.
Right. I mean, they govern, they govern their roads. They govern their speed, they govern their speeds.
What is this, 10-foot easement?
The town has no say on any of that. No say on it.
Except to pay the bill.
Except to pay the bill, right. So, so Mrs. Griffin, to your point, that's the question that I, that's the question I'm waiting for an answer for.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
It's all state.
But in the interim, until we get that, I wanted to make sure we had a way, so when we can fix our signs, then my understanding is we can have the road painted in front with a slow school zone sign. Yes. So that was not on our plan last year because through this past year that came up with the district safety committee, with our, through our parents, with their concern. Rightfully so. I mean, my understanding is cars do go very quickly down that area. Okay. The other items, another new item is a knee wall with power added to the light. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm still flipping out on the whole thing with the flashing schools. Is there someone, I mean, even a quick phone call to council just to ascertain whose responsibility on a state highway signalization for a school zone? That's a pretty easy question. Maybe we have council give us.
Even Kate might be able to help with that.
Pardon?
Even Kate.
Kate, yeah. Should we have sources that could, that could get us an answer on that?
Sure. I mean, I was, I was not going to let it go easily, I was waiting to hear first from the state.
No, I think we need to hear from our side of the coin and then.
I just have a feeling if we pay.
And then alert the state that there's a need to have an upgraded.
Everybody can do that.
All right, I will do that.
I mean, for the bike trail, did the state put that stuff up?
Yes.
The town didn't pay for that, right? So why would we pay for this?
Yeah, that was the whole.
The Hawk, on 20 was two years. And on 189. But not at Caffrey Hill.
Well, that's a, that's a town road, that's why.
And that was through the Greenway grant that was, that goes back a long time.
So just for the record, I'm not done with it yet, but I wanted to make sure it was represented just in case we had to.
Sure.
To fund it. Knee wall to add to the library with power. One thing we'd like to do in the high school, we have a computer lab, which we can change into a classroom and move our computers into the library because we can definitely utilize, it's a good-sized classroom space. We would just need to put a knee wall into the library with some power so we can move our desktops into that space. The 25,000, this is a number that I worked with Ray Carlson on. As Mr. Phelan was talking, taking our multipurpose room, which is like sizes of almost two classrooms, and actually make it into two spaces where Mr. Carlson has an idea to make like a folding wall so we have two separate classes, it already has two entries, which is, which is good. Right now it has some bookshelves and it's hard to conduct two different classes in there at the same time.
25,000 for a wall?
Are you talking about one of those big on-the-tracks accordion style so you can open and close it as needed for a larger room? You said a multi, or the, because I could see that for that, but a single wall, if it's just a solid wall, probably not.
Yeah.
Is this one of the?
With changes at the schools we'll be going through, he suggests a folding commercial style partition with a pass-through door. This would let us escape some added costs for a fixed wall. Either way, he recommends the number at 25,000.
What's, what's the space?
I can see it the other way.
What's the space so that anybody that might want to go look at it tomorrow?
It's a multipurpose room.
It's currently just known as the multipurpose room?
Yeah, you walk in there, it's one big room with bookcases and stuff in between partitioning it off. It's, if you walk in the main door, it's to the right of the middle school.
It has windows.
It's a second door on the right.
Yeah, say not the first one, second.
If you walk in the middle school door.
Take a right.
Take a right, it's a second door on the right, second and third door on the right going out.
Drops from the media center.
Yeah, yeah.
And this has been something we've looked at for years now. Actually, the Board of Finance years ago asked us, there's somebody, University of Hartford was going to volunteer to take a look at it for us and, and they did and they gave us a price that was greater than this, wasn't it?
Well, that was the soundproofing.
Well, that was the soundproofing.
Yes, yes, but, but right, right idea.
The office.
That would be like acoustic sound.
Yeah, that was for the office.
That you would want to have like in a concert hall. The figures for the knee wall and the figure for the multipurpose room, is that representing going out the bit or is that representing material cost and having someone from the town of East Scramby and/or the Board of Education do the work?
What we've been doing with our, with a lot of our capital projects is looking to see what our town can do, you know, to support us in whatever way. If it requires electrician, we usually need to go out to bid because we don't have our own.
Because we don't have a town.
Correct.
Correct.
So it depends on what the work or which parts of the work are being done.
Kind of addressing your point, Ricky, it seems like a big number.
Yeah.
And it depends on what it really is that they're doing. But when we say create room, I would assume that.
I could see that figure if it's one of those.
It's not a movable wall, it's a, it's a wall.
You were saying.
Well, to put there and put parentheses, create room.
Yeah.
And that would involve.
Is it a movable wall? Because I thought you.
Yes, I would say it's a commercial style partition with a pass-through door.
So when I think of that, it's, yeah, it has, like from here, you'd build a little cuppy over there that it folds in and then the door shuts and in the middle there's a door also. So you could pull open the whole thing, have this, two rooms with a pass-through door, or you can open it and have it one big room.
Hotel ballrooms when they split them up.
Correct.
Same concept.
Yep.
So why a movable wall versus a stationary? What's the?
Escape some added costs. I believe we have to look at the HVAC, the venting system would have to make some changes if, if we have a, up to the ceiling.
You do have standards if you have permanent rooms. Then you have to bring in complete new ducting to each room, return, yeah. Whereas a removable wall, you leave that door open, still one room. So you ask the cost of the wall, if it was solid, would be less than 25,000, but once you start adding all the ancillaries to make it code, probably get higher.
But how, okay. And we have, we really have like students in a locker room, like teaching a class?
Yes.
Yes.
It's been that way for quite a while.
Really?
Yep.
That's wild. And we.
Well, they don't use it for locker rooms, they've been converting it to a classroom space.
Even when I was in high school, the high school, one of the lockers was turned into a health room. We did that long ago.
Of course, I bet you're acoustics.
Okay, so that's not like, it's not like an all of a sudden we had an influx of students and then we had to like start opening up like. Middle school, it's probably newer, right?
It's been there for about 15 years.
Oh, so the. Okay.
The French classroom was in the former girls' locker.
Oh, not that one, not that one.
I'd say about 12, at least 12 years is my guess.
French was in the former girls'.
Right, that's.
Locker room at the middle school.
Wild. We speak a lot of French in the locker rooms.
Also, on the 2425 plan that is not new is the air conditioning for Seymour School. I am told that that $70,000 is a good number. The idea is the mini splits versus a rooftop unit. The gym at Seymour School, for anybody who's not aware, is the only space for all school assemblies and, you know, meeting space. There is no auditorium, so that space gets very, very warm. And I did check with Ray and he says that's a good, good number still.
Does Allgrove have many splits?
They do in the gym. We did that as part of the air conditioning with the, the rest of the building two years ago.
How old are the mini splits? We're replacing current ones, right? Old ones?
There's nothing in there.
There's nothing in there, nothing.
It was never done when the school was renovated. That's 2425. And then there's, I'm sorry, there's a $12,000 for some software for IT. 2526, the IT plan is pretty consistent, we really haven't changed that at all. We actually took off all of our smart boards because through all of our grants over the last three years and then the last capital funding bunch, we were able to upgrade all of our smart boards throughout district and they're actually called view boards now. We've moved beyond the smart boards. We have Santa Glade, we do that every three years for all of our bathrooms and locker rooms. We originally had to finish our gym floor, so scrape it down, redo the entire gym floor. It doesn't make sense to do that until the roof is done. So that is getting moved out a few years, but we will probably need to do, I think the term is a skim, I don't know, Bob or Ricky or John, someone might be able to answer that. I think it's a skim coat. And our floor has actually been looking pretty good, our gym floor. But there's no sense obviously to redo it all until our roof has been redone. But we want to make sure we keep our gym floor, you know, in good shape for the next four, four years or so. Theater lighting, this has been on here for a couple of years. We did do our house lights as part of our LED project, we did not do the theater lights. We did get a quote a few years ago and for about $80,000. Now, Mrs. Heine, your business manager, and I are also looking into our rentals and when our auditor comes in, we are going to pose the question, as we rent out our theater, our theater, as we rent out our auditorium, how can we keep that, those funds separately? We're told we're able to. And then use that money to then do some upgrades, capital upgrades, to the space that we are garnering those funds from. So for instance. space that we are garnering those funds from. So for instance, um, the theater lights, the auditorium seating, you know, how can we use the, um, fees for rentals to support us in, um, upgrades to those spaces?
That's a good idea.
What kind of quote unquote income are we, or have we, are we talking a couple thousand dollars? Or several thousand dollars?
Yeah, we have a couple of companies that is.
Many thousand dollars.
And it's probably around eight, $9,000 for a weekend rental, some of the larger groups.
Course of the year?
How many?
I mean, course of the year, any idea?
Approximately.
30, 40?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's significant enough. I mean, sure, it varies, but it's.
Yeah.
You know, certainly in a.
And if you earmark it for things like that, you're more likely to get things like that.
Yes.
Than going through capital.
Would the same thing hold true if, um, if you're talking, um, renting, leasing the, uh, high school, uh, gymnasium? Do we have the same?
It would be.
Kind of revenue coming in or not?
We, no, we do not. We don't really get any revenue for our gym space.
If we did, it would, it would also be able to be earmarked to go back to the gym?
That's our understanding, yes.
When we get clarification on the theater, we'll get clarification on the gym?
Yeah, it would be inclusive of any space that we rent or.
Is that included for some reason, our wall fields instead of being just used or being rented? Would that include also the other facilities and facilities of any of the other, uh, district buildings?
Currently, the fees we take in are primarily auditorium. We really don't collect any fees for any other space that's used with our buildings or fields.
Okay.
For the theater lights, since we're going to LED, um, that would be considered an energy savings as well. Do we have, I think we're over a year, a full year now with the LED project, right? Do we have final data from that of anything we can show for energy savings? I did see there was a tax initiative that was reduced. It was like, what was it called? The Inflation Reduction Act, and last year it got reduced. It used to be a 50% standard and it got reduced to 25%. So if it can show you reduced your energy by 25%, there's some pretty significant, um, federal tax deductions. So if we're going from, uh, older style lights in the theater, which are big lights, to LED, that might combine with what we already did. I don't know, maybe we'll hit that 25%. There might be some additional savings there. It's a maximum of up to $5 per square foot.
And that's if you could show.
25%.
25% reduction.
Yep. I know that was a pretty big project when we developed those LED, so we might already be there.
Okay. So we can get, uh, Mr. Borch for some more information. I'm, I'm not familiar with that, um, act, but.
I think the town.
It's a 2022 Inflation Reduction.
Um, we had some $5,000 markers in here last year for some assessments. I'm not sure if the board wants to keep those in there. We are looking to do some assessments, get some quotes on some of our, some larger projects, including, um, the auditorium seating, what's the cost to replace versus repair, the upholstery, um, the gym air conditioning assessment that would be at the high school to look at adding, um, air conditioning at the gym in the high school. And the third, um, was to look at the costs of doing, um, soccer field, uh, outdoor lights.
Whatever you mean assessment and there's a price tag attached that, so your, that price tag is just for the assessment itself?
Mm-hmm.
Well, a lot of times when you put those types of assessments out, if you go with the company who does, there's different types. There's consulting engineers who only do the assessments, and then there's the companies that will do the assessment and then do the work. So I'd prefer to have that type of company because a lot of times they'll roll that assessment fee into the job. So it's not a sunk cost then.
Although these are most likely have to go out to bid, so because of the cost that would be done. Thank you, I'm Mr. Lukemba.
And currently, right now with the soccer field, we rent the lights that come in, and that rental fee that we get the lights for, like, that comes out of our budget?
No.
Or where does that come from?
No, 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 that's.
Booster club.
That's the booster club, right?
Yeah. But there was a conversation about, you know, with the town using the fields, is this something that would be, um, you know, inviting for people to look at in terms of enhancement of our community field use?
Yeah.
Then you get into, well, if you're running it out, that enough that you need lights, then overuse and you need other fields so you can rotate them, or else you're going to kill that field really quick.
Right.
Which is also a concern.
Yep.
Yeah.
In order to be considered a capital project, there's a $5,000 threshold. So it's, it's the place.
For town.
But you put it in there.
I, I mean, my thought, and you know, you can certainly disagree with me, I'm not sure if we need to put those in there. Um, I'm, I'm thinking we can get some companies to give us ballpark numbers for planning for all of those items. Um, the field is a little different. I'm, I'm not as familiar with that, but in terms of the auditorium seating and the, uh, you know, gym air conditioning,
Any company worth their while, you tell them how many seats are in the auditorium and what style seats they're going, they can give you a ballpark in 10 minutes.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that we need to keep those there, but like I said, disagree with me if, if.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I, I think it's a good idea. Plus, you know, as well as I do, they're going to change their number to 10,000 for the minimum. They're already talking about it, so 5,000 is going to go by the side anyway. Uh, and I think we should look, we'll probably get somebody who could give us a price on lighting for soccer fields, because the companies say like that type of business. Uh, so let's see, what's our table for that here? Yeah, that's the year before it's on with doing a roof. Maybe we should, uh, kick that down. It's up to you guys.
I think if you, if you say, you know, if you put some sort of soccer field lights assessment, I think you, I think you have to project what you think it would be to actually do a project. I think it's sort of, you know, whether it's five or 10 or whatever to do an assessment. The question's going to come, well, how much are we talking?
Right.
You know, and.
And Ricky's point of them.
Even before someone wants to approve funds to assess it, what are we talking ballpark?
And to your point, Ricky, of them putting it back in a project, I mean, I think we all know well enough, we may have an assessment done, but we're not going to be doing it the following year, having the money to do it.
I need to get back on getting on the town to do that townwide assessment.
For Dr. Black.
Yes, the combined, uh, you know, recreation, town, school, need to get that going again.
I mean, I, I feel the auditorium seating is a much higher priority. Um, that was done in 2001 with the renovation, so, um, it gets a lot of, um, use. And like I said, if we can work with our auditors, some of the rentals, we can chip away, but I, I would have that as a, more of a priority than, um, than the outdoor lights. Nothing against outdoor lights. I was a soccer player and a coach most of my life, but, um, if I, if I have to make a priority, I think the auditorium is.
Yeah, I, I agree with Missy. And your point, Ricky, is, is valid too, of the town looking at it, because, you know, I'm for doing soccer field lights, but I think the town will use it more than we do. I mean, we'll use it for a couple soccer, a few soccer games for the girls and boys each year, but not every, not every game. And then it's not going to be used, but it's going to be used every night by other groups. I mean, we may get some rentals still, but it's going to be used every night. And then you talked about your wear and tear type of item.
Soccer tournaments.
So what I'll do is if, if the board agrees, I'll take those, um, amounts off, because I do think we can still get our numbers that we need to for both the air conditioning as well as the, um, reupholstery or replacement of the chairs.
Any objections to taking those out? Saying none, I guess they said, take it out. It's worth looking at.
Okay, now, just to summarize the remaining kind of four years, um, you know, we do air duct cleaning every three years. That's, um, a couple of years ago, we did it through non-lapsing versus capital. We took it out of capital, we used non-lapsing fund. Some of our big items, um, is to refinish the gym floor. Once the roof is done, obviously our roof is a big project for 26, 27. Um, uh, I did put some numbers in here for auditorium seating, okay? So when that plan actually gets carried out, uh, 28, 29, 29, 30, there's going to be a need coming down the pipe to redo our pre-K bathrooms, our preschool, um, area bathrooms. Uh, we have two classrooms there. Um, the other thing we need to look at is our playground access for both Seymour and All Grove. Um, we, you know, certainly have a need to make, um, some areas more accessible. And the back part of Seymour, if you've been there, after the, the play area, it kind of slopes down a bit, you know, onto the fence. So the kids kind of lose that play area. I mean, they still do, but it, um, I don't, I don't know if it's erosion, but the, the ground is not even. So it, so basically, little by little, we're losing kind of that playground area. And we do have a, uh, like I said, a need for some accessible playground equipment for, um, a few of our children. So, um, All Grove, I don't know when All Grove Playground was built, you know, I, I walked through it all the time. Um, I anticipate there's some up, upgrades that will need to be there as well as some accessibility, um, aspects as well. Um, I, the numbers I put down there are really not based on a true estimate because it's going to depend on what you're doing, you know? Um, and that would, I think, be almost an ad hoc committee to look at, you know, those areas. Uh, is there anything else that sticks out that I didn't talk about that you would like to know about?
I was curious if there's been a discussion, we were talking about like lights in front of Seymour, um, ever since I lived in East Gramby, but the middle school and the high school is really hard to find. If you don't know that you're looking for it at night, to know where to turn. There, there's, the, the sign is not lit, it's far back off the road. Like, I, I had no idea until I was trying to like go to, uh, evening, whatever it was, that it's even there. And I just didn't know, not looking to spend any more money right now, but at some point, if that would be something that we would consider having a sign. And, I mean, we, you know, we still have like the letters and stuff where you have to lift the heavy glass. Like, that's kind of crazy, whether it would make more sense to have, you know, a light up sign that would be changing easier. And I don't even know where the ballpark is on what something like that.
Awesome class gift for those leftover funds.
Wouldn't it be?
Sure would be.
That'd be a fantastic class gift.
Sure would be.
Absolutely, Lisa, that's a good idea. I mean, we, we've talked about it. It's something that can be changed on a daily basis. Right now, it, it's hard to do, and that glass is, is dangerous. I think Amanda remembers how heavy it is and kids, uh, you know, go down there and change it, and somebody could get seriously hurt. I think a digital sign that someone could change a principal from their cell phone, could be updated, game today, things like that would be worthwhile and make the school more noticeable. I didn't realize the lights are out, they're not lit at night?
No, like, there's a, there's a light to mark the driveway, but the sign is not lit.
The sign's not lit anymore.
The sign is not lit, so you don't.
Because we have electricity there, so putting in something digital, we wouldn't have to worry about bringing electricity all the way down. But that's something that, uh, I agree, I always thought was, would be helpful there.
So you're saying, so not so much a street sign, but a, a.
A marquee.
Digital marquee.
Didn't we talk about that at one point?
Yeah.
The leftover money? I thought we touched on that.
I've been promoting that for a while.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, that would be.
I don't know, that's something that needs to be put onto the capital plan if we're ever expecting it to turn into something.
They got a nice one in East Windsor. You know what time it is. You know what your temperature is.
That's all they have on.
Those temperatures are never right.
How many days left in school?
A home game tonight.
Never right either.
Your temperature made here.
Yeah, right. These are never right.
But it does, it, and it, it says whatever, Tuesday night, you know, back to school night, whatever.
All right, thanks, thank you, Ms. Griffin. I will.
Witty ones I've seen, like, don't worry, parents, you only have three days left. That's all that in the summer.
Do you want me to add it to the capital plan somewhere? Do you want me to make note for, um, you know, you know, future planning?
I don't know. I think it would be nice to see something improved or changed within the next five years on the capital plan there. If there's a spot that's, to even things out a little bit more, I, I don't know. Again, I don't, you know, maybe it's something that can be a fundraising target from boosters or parent groups.
Yeah.
Or putting it to the classes. If we had an idea of the price tag that we're looking for, maybe we put that in front of any classes for a class gift as the like, you know, oh, give it to us, class gift. Well, what are you going to do with it? Here's an idea.
Yeah, it's going to be 15,000.
Right, so we come up with like a wish list.
We actually got a quote a couple of years ago for one.
We could always, if the board, if the board want to do this, we could go non-lapsing and do it, and we don't have to worry about asking, going, asking the town for the money. I mean, some, we have that money and, and I know their Board of Finance members just don't like us making that pop bigger and bigger. And now with the new state law, we, we don't have to ask them for permission to put it in non-lapsing. We can do that automatically and they can't stop us. But I think the community would like to see us using it. I mean, there's no sense in just saving money and not using it. I mean, we're going to use some tonight for fans and things. I, I like the, the idea of having some money that we use for something that people see. This is what we were able to do. We weren't able to take it out of our budget. We saved it, administrators saved it over previous years in a non-lapsing fund. I would rather see us spend some on that than just on repairs all the time. Something like that would be worthwhile. Okay, is there anything else, Missy, on this?
Um, I think I went over the, the major and, and the minor, actually, unless there's something.
I just have one item that's a board, it's not part of the five-year plan, but it's the elephant in the room. Uh, I believe with all the construction going on and apartments in town, we're going to be talking about a, the necessary need of a new elementary school, K through five or K through six, like they should have done 15 years ago, and we would have spent a lot less money to do it.
Longer than 15.
But it's longer than.
20 years ago.
20 years ago.
25.
Now, those apartment buildings have roofs on them down the road, and they're going to have kids. And when the town did pay to have an advisor come in and do that study with Town Center, I specifically asked him the question about what happens when enrollment goes up and you need more school, new school. And his quick response was, you build a new school and you bond it for 20 years. And if you look at towns like South Windsor and Manchester with lots of apartments, they're building new schools. I, I think we need to put that out there. I think people need to realize, I, I may not be here, but I don't want the board to be criticized that we weren't looking to the future. Right now, you look at Seymour School, we can't fit anymore. Fifth graders are too big for those rooms. They built that school, minimum standards, uh, and we're not going to repair it. We would be better off, we'd save a lot of money of having one school. We'd save money on buses, we'd save money on staffing, on maintenance, a whole lot of things, but no one wants to talk about it. And I think, looking at this, I think telling the Board of Finance that that's down the road, I wouldn't do it unless the board said, at least give my heads up, that we're thinking of it. So it's up to you. Otherwise, I'll just present, we'll present the five-year plan.
Now, at some point in time, um, we do need to, you know, go back historically, it was the other Bob.
Bob Regan Seagird?
No, Bob, um, Superintendent prior to Chris.
Kazakha?
Thank you.
Kazakha.
We had a, um, what did we call it? Elementary school, um, vision committee. And the purpose of then, we, we worked for about nine months on it. Um, there were, um, one or two members of the Board of Education, there were a couple other just John Q. Public, I guess that's what I qualified as. Um, but there were a group of people. We toured different schools, we looked at, we looked at the costs, we looked at, you know, the cost of schools that we toured, we looked at the size requirement that town of East Gramby would have based on, um, we have something, uh, in our Plan of Conservation and Development, it's called a build-out. And what the build-out is, if you took the zoning and it got quote unquote build-out, our build-out at, at that time was somewhere close to 8,000 population, has not happened for market reasons. Um, and is it likely to happen in the next 10 years? Probably not, but still, we have a build-out and that build-out. Probably not, but still, we have a build-out, and that build-out could potentially happen. And there have been projects that have been approved by planning and zoning, and rightfully so, they're properly zoned. It's not, you know, it's what the town has planned for 30-plus years. But there is a possibility that if market forces are such that if the building starts to happen, which we're seeing, that it's actually happening now instead of just approving new housing units and whatnot. But it's happening, it's going to happen. I don't want to, you know, project when it's going to trickle down and affect the district, but it's going to affect the district sometime, you know, conceivably in the next five to 10 years. And if five years from now, the town has not looked at this and thought about it and made plans for the future, what they're going to be looking at is they're going to be looking at the need to bring in temporary classrooms, and they're going to need to be leasing space, and they're going to need to be providing, you know, classroom because classroom space we have, as you just said, is somewhat inadequate now and is stretching the limits of what our school population is. You know, 10 years ago, they showed, you know, enrollment in Connecticut downtown, but it's not been the case for certain communities. Our community now is growing, and it's growing with the population, school population. I think it would behoove the Town of East Granby and by its either Board of Education or by its Board of Selectmen to form a school study committee and to do it sooner rather than later. So that five years from now, we're not looking at, you know, crisis and looking at, and again, you know... And you see it, you know? They put it off in South Windsor for the longest time. Pleasant Valley School, it's right there on Pleasant Valley Road in Pleasant Valley, South Windsor. For years, they just went with temporary classroom after temporary classroom. They did the same thing at Orchard Hill. They were blind to the fact that their community went from 20-some-odd thousands to nearly 30,000 population over a 15, 20-year span. Their school population increased similarly. It increased by, you know, 40%. And finally, they went, you know, years later, and have built new schools, which they could have done a long time ago, which we could have done a long time ago. We could have built an inclusive school that would have had room for pre-K through six, and we could have done that for the cost of what it would cost us to build a school now.
That's right. One, so, yeah, so I like to be proactive and not reactive.
I don't, I don't know the procedure of that, though, Bob. I don't know if that, if that comes from the...
Probably Selectmen.
From the Board of Education. Yeah, but it needs to happen. It needs to happen sometime.
So it hasn't... So are you guys okay with me just throwing it out there? I mean, just giving information to them. I don't want, I don't want them to come back three years from now and tell us, "Jeez, what happened? How come you guys never planned for this?" I think we're aware of it. I mean, some of you are new. A couple of years ago, we were looking at other spaces, at least put offices. Like you said, we have people in locker rooms, which we've converted over.
How many years ago was the assessment done?
2003, 2004.
Yeah, so we should get a new assessment.
Well, they need a new committee.
I mean, I assume they go back through an audit of all maintenance costs that we've, that were sinking into old schools, and then reduced oil, reduced electricity. I mean, granted, we'd probably keep one of the old buildings open for admin, maybe make that the pre-K center and have a revenue generation.
What ended up happening from that was that the town decided, and I can't remember if we went, I don't think we had any kind of referendum.
We're going to keep getting all these state mandated deals.
What we ended up doing was we ended up having a school building committee formulated to rebuild Seymour School. Seymour School was an open-classroom school. There were no walls in the interior. It was open classroom. Classrooms were separate. There was one classroom that was grade four. It was an actual classroom that had four walls and a door. But other classrooms...
Nope, that was art. That wasn't even a classroom, that was art.
I think we budget for an assessment because there's so many programs now. I got to imagine they would apply to new construction, too. I mean, we're going to keep getting mandated. We already got the HVAC mandate from the state. We're going to get something for energy eventually. They're going to keep mandating that we're just throwing stuff at an old building, whereas there's got to be rebates and programs for...
How about if I reach out to the first-elect person's office and kind of revive? I do attend planning and zoning meetings. I will be going tomorrow night just to try and get some information to stay ahead of the curve. We contact the town often to see how many permits have been upheld for new housing so we can, again, do our best to... It doesn't, doesn't really help until people are moved in. You don't know where, you know, children are coming from. But I will reach out to the first-elect person to get that revived again.
Even expanding pre-K and special ed programs is bringing money into the district.
Okay.
But in the present environment, good luck.
Okay, let's call you guys up.
Yeah, so for the September, so we will, we're not at a motion yet, but when we have a motion, we could certainly table this. However, for the Board of Finance meeting, I will highlight some of the large items that we talked about tonight. Does that sound okay? Okay. So let's move on.
Financier and financials.
Yes. Overview of the year-end financials, the Board of Finance has requested for September, particularly potential or expected year-end balance, and if there is an expectation that the board will look to utilize or put funds into a non-lapsing, the non-lapsing fund.
And our return, any money to the general fund.
Right, that was the potential expected year-end balance.
As we talked last, last meeting, we have about 240 preliminary numbers. Verbal auditors are coming next week, which is about 1.2% of our budget. So at the moment, that's really where it stands until they come and do the audits. So then, as this is, as, you know, we just need to know what we're going to show the Board of Finance next week.
Is that a place where the marquee could come out of?
I was just going to say that. That's up to the board. That's up to the board. If that's what you want to do, that's up to you.
What do you mean, the non-lapsing? Is that what you're asking?
Well, you said, can we take the, do the sign, right, the high school on a non-lapsing? That's up to us.
The general, what was the other one? What did, what was the final after we paid out the last class? What was the final of all of that piled up? Because I know we used, the school decided to use some of that for the weight room, right? Could they choose to do something for the marquee?
Not other student activity.
Yeah, that's all another discussion, yeah. That's all another discussion. But out of the non-lapsing would be up to us.
Okay.
But out of that, I think there's still discussion on that.
Two, what did you say?
We're probably about 240 preliminary unaudited numbers.
For 15.
And 2% of the budget, 382,000. So we're allowed, we're allowed to have leftover 382. So we're only at one, about 1.25%.
That's up, if the board wants it, we can look at that.
Or any portion thereof. Doesn't have to be the full.
Yeah. If we got just a preliminary idea, we could, we could, we could do that. And we wouldn't need to go, since it wouldn't be through capital, we wouldn't need to go through any bid process.
Right.
We wouldn't have to get three bids.
But you mean non-lapsing, not capital?
Right.
Right, right. Doing it with our funds.
So it, it sounds like the answer will be, yes, we will look to put some of the funds in non-lapsing, unsure of the amount?
Absolutely, and unsure of the amount, yeah. But absolutely, I think. Any board objecting to wanting to put some of it in non-lapsing? Okay, there's no objection from the board, so.
Okay, very good.
Well, maybe I should ask the board what percent? I mean, what do you guys think about it?
I mean, I don't want that. I wouldn't want the non-lapsing to just keep growing and growing.
No, that's why I think using it appropriately would be...
If you're saying 15K, I'd say up to 100% if needed. 15K out of 240.
You're saying, I think they're saying of the 240, what percent of the 240 we want to put to the non-lapsing?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Not about the sign. We'll come back with you on the sign. We'll come back another...
Sorry, I got, I thought you said the current, what's our current non-lapsing?
168-ish?
168.
Okay. It's still under 10%. And that's with current.
Still over 10%, it's under 2%.
He's talking about, you're talking about the 15,000 that's in your head for the sign.
Yep.
If it was going towards the sign, it was less than that. So what it is, so if we're talking 240 is the total number that we're saying, we, what, no more than 20%? What are we usually, like, what are we, what's historically...
We've done 100, we've done 50.
25?
Like, the highest we've ever done was 340 in 1022, 2020.
That was a whole...
That was after, that was after COVID when we had a big, and we were expecting, you know, the future year.
What I'd like some thought from you guys, and not tonight, that money. Maybe we want to use some of that to put in, put aside for either a new school or classrooms that we have to get, or if we have to lease space. I mean, at least then we have a focus on some of the money. Because if we, if the day comes, and the day is going to come, when we have to build a new school, it'd be nice if the Board of Ed can say, "Hey, we've got a million in this account that we can put towards it."
Is there a max accumulation?
Not with the new law, right? Not with the new law. Before, there was before. It was 1%, then it went to 2%. Now it's, if you don't need permission. Because a lot of Board of Finances, from what I've learned from Board of Ed chairs, wouldn't let them have a non-lapsing account. Wouldn't give it to them. And even now, I've heard Board chairs say it's going to be very difficult for them, even though they don't have to ask for permission. So we're very fortunate in East Granby with our relationship with the Board of Finance that we haven't had any difficulties with this. And now by law, there's, there won't be difficulties for anyone.
Saving some for a field project, too.
Well, there are things we can do. And you know what's nice about that, Ricky? It's, we see what we've done, you know?
Are there any realities of taking out any bonds on that and getting interest?
I don't think the school can take out the bonds.
Okay, now it's got to lay.
Sitting there, right?
I like your creativity.
Dead money.
Okay, recommended actions. Item 4A, approved capital plan.
Hey, we got a motion for that?
No moves.
Motion, so moved by Whit...
No, I would, I'd make a motion to approve the capital plan as it has been adjusted and or amended by comments of the board and superintendent.
Okay, Whitney will second that?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? That's a good, good one. Questions, comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item B, approved green machine for irrigation of baseball, softball, or soccer fields, not to exceed $125,000. This has been approved by capital funding. This has been on the capital plan since 2006, when it was $26,000. So now we're doing, it's a lot more. But it's all approved and the money's there. All the board has to do is approve it. Do we have a motion to approve it? Whitney makes a motion to approve the irrigation for green machine? Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item C, approving repairing the damage in home run fence area for the baseball and softball fields, not to exceed $25,000. And again, this is approved by capital funding. And the thought is, we're going to bring the softball field fenced in more to regulations, and there should be more home runs being hit, making all the games more exciting.
Can we...
But that's not why we're doing it.
Can we modify the motion to approve repairing, replacing, or relocating? Just so...
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
So it's replacing, repairing, and what?
Relocating.
Relocating, that's why we are going to relocate.
That way, all options are available within the budget.
Do we have a second for that motion? A second by Whitney. Any questions, discussions, or comments? Seeing none, all those...
I'm sorry. I know we, I know we went back and forth and around the horn on this. Baseball term. Are we doing this partly ourselves? Are we doing this with a couple of different vendors? I can't remember.
So the irrigation is one.
No, no, the, the...
The fencing.
Green machine, I'm solid.
The fencing, we need to get quotes for. We had some people come out and take a look. We haven't gotten quotes back yet. But the idea is to only do the home run fencing now because we don't know what the future entails. And if you look at the layout of some of the sideline fences, it doesn't really make sense.
The finance approved.
Yep.
Capital funding with that.
No, we did have quotes. We did have quotes.
We have quotes, okay.
So we're just limiting it to a smaller section now.
Okay.
The other fencing isn't in terrible, and it doesn't affect play. And I, it's not really strategically located.
And we get quotes around 25,000? I had a quote for 7,000 just for my garden for a fence. It's a pretty good price.
Well, this isn't for everything, yeah.
Yeah.
Crazy.
So some sections will be repaired, some sections will be replaced.
Don't do anything till December.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Item D, approve using non-lapsing funds, not to exceed $16,000 for exhaust fans at All Grove School and the boiler repairs at the middle high school. Do we have a motion for that? Do we want to go home tonight?
So moved.
John with the motion. We have a second for the motion. Second by Amanda. Any discussion on the motion? Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify saying aye. Signify saying aye.
Aye.
I was going to say, the motion not to exceed 16,000? Did you say that?
Not to exceed 16,000.
The quote itself is for 15,261, but just...
Right, but I'm sorry, I was, I was proposing the motion as it was stated.
Thank you.
Not to exceed 16,000.
I must have spaced out.
Thanks for the clarification. I think we voted, right?
Yep.
Okay. Item A, approve graduation date 2025. All right, we're not the end of the year already.
Come on, please.
Yes.
I know you've been working on it.
Yeah.
We would like an approval or a motion to approve Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, as East Granby has graduation for the class of 2025.
What's last day of school right now? Is that the last day of school?
That is the last day of school right now. Wednesday, June 11th. That's the last student day. And that day works well with safe grad, project grad.
So it's the last day of school and it's graduation?
It's the last day of the published calendar, yes. Wednesday, June 11th.
Is that typical?
Is what typical?
Last day, last day of school and graduation on the same day?
It could be.
Until you start adding snow.
Until you have snow days, right. See, this is before snow days.
What happens if we have six?
So this day stays, but we could be pushed out.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that's what I have in my head.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, graduation stays.
Graduate stays.
Oh, how set in stone, if we have a ridiculous winter, and the end of school goes out a full week, how set in stone is graduation?
100%.
If we set it now, it's 100%.
It affects everything, yeah.
You can wait, but no one likes you waiting.
Because project graduation, they have to get their spot wherever they want it, and they're competing against other schools who are booking their graduation dates now also, so.
So how does that work from a state level? So if they graduate on the 11th, but school goes to?
The 20th.
Or the 19th, or whatever.
Well, didn't that just change a few years?
Do all those dates count as absences? And then the state has that mandatory after 10, the state or.
No, the state recently has just changed. They've changed their, their rulings, and they allow Boards of Education to set graduation for the year on the one, no, no earlier than the 180th day of the published calendar. We go 182 days in our district for our children, so our published calendar, the last day, the 182 tooth, 182nd day would be Wednesday, June 11th.
And they don't take into consideration then if there's five snow days?
I think we've had that, actually.
Yeah, there's always been a few when they graduated.
They're done. Yep.
Do you have a motion? A sound, make a motion for graduation date to be 6/11? June 11, I was trying to find my calendar, June 11, 2025.
Do we have a second for that?
Whitney's second.
Any other discussion or comments or questions?
I will say, it is going to be a, sorry, cold and wet winter.
I hope, you add another word, white.
I, absolutely. I will, I will say that.
I hope so.
That's what I've been hearing.
I have inside information.
We don't get those days anymore, though. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, make a motion, signify, saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Agenda items for future meetings. Before I ask some, I did go back and look at our meetings. We do have to approve Superintendent's contract extension, and I looked at May 28th, we were asked for, to put on future meetings of solar options, middle school lab period was asked there, and student activities account, and I've added, I'll add mine, is we need to talk about our Board goals. Any other agenda items for future meetings?
How far out in the, I know we've gotten the state guidance, seen the emails, we're having some workshops, I assume we're going to have to have the cell phone topic at a Board meeting. I don't want to be that person.
Actually, we have a policy on, do you think our policy works?
Yeah, we discussed that.
Our policy is really no joke, no, people are making their policy to be.
That's what I'm saying.
But we are having conversations.
Policy first, or?
But we don't need to talk about it right now.
Well, right now, our policy, we're just waiting for more guidance from the state.
I thought it was pretty clear.
Yeah, Ricky?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
This is, they'll be discussing that with groups and stuff, but our policy right now is pretty much what they're asking, it's just enforcing it, I think, we're making a great effort this year doing it.
Okay.
So, you know, I think the community will talk about it, beginning at our level, right now, our policy says, you know, can't use cell phones in school, you know, and Walkmans as well.
And pagers.
And pagers, pagers.
And lasers. Laser pointers.
I know there was a discussion prior to the end of the school year last year about homework policy at the elementary level and then middle school level. Do we want to revisit that again?
You want to add that? Did you say somebody brought that up to you? Because that is a Board policy, a homework policy.
I mean, I think that could go through Policy Subcommittee, if I may, I mean.
But that is a discussion in curriculum.
Curriculum, yes.
We can talk about it, curriculum.
I know there was, I thought she said it had to go through.
There was, yeah. It didn't really go anywhere else.
Well, the Board will have to approve it.
I know there was a group of girls that wanted to present at the Board of Eds, I don't know what that looks like and how that works, but they had approached you with the whole, the whole thing, I'm like, I don't know.
Okay, item six, comments?
That would probably be best served going through Policy Committee, not curriculum, because we have a policy, and, and, you know, if there's a need to change policy, amend policy, whatever, then start to it is through policy. And then the Policy Committee could invite outside people to come to that meeting. But to have people come to our meeting, they would have the opportunity at this late hour to, to speak as to it, but certainly, they would sit through the meeting and there'd be no discussion. So the proper way to go would be first through policy.
No, I think you're right. And I agree. Comments, visitors?
Do we have a policy?
Should I stand? Hi, I'm Tridam Noon, I'm from Eat Mountain Drive, and I just came to observe.
Thank you.
I, Bob, you had mentioned an elephant in the room, and I passed by the new, the new buildings and everything, and I wondered myself, as a parent in the community, I know there's a lot of talk with budget, and people talk about the budget being passed, but the reality is, the budget that was asked for wasn't passed, they got beaten down. And so I just wanted to kind of observe and see what's going on. But also, like I said, as a parent, a 13, 14-year-old, I do, I don't know if it's well-received or not, but I want to applaud the high school. When I went to open house the other night, the teachers were very candid, but in a very polite way, non-confrontational, when answering questions from the parents, they're candid about the budget cuts. And, you know, we found ourselves in a classroom that now have 25, 27 students, and they said, you know, do the budget constraints, we're making this work. And throughout that night and that journey, it was very obvious that they're trying to make the best and the most with what's given to them and what they have. My son was, and a few, I know there are a few students in town that were supposed to be in an honors class, I was no longer there, and in the last minute, they were able to put something together to honor that. Same thing with electives, and a bunch of the electives that they used to offer aren't there, but the teachers, you just see it in their heart, they're trying their absolute hardest to make the best of what, what they have given to them. So I really applaud them for doing that, you know, we see, we see the buses, and I think it's important that the residents, particularly the residents who have children in the school system, recognize that. So when we talk about budget, and, okay, here's the budget that we're proposing and going out to vote, that they remember, this is the, this is what happens when the budget, what we need versus what we actually get happens. So I, again, I applaud them, and we're just here to observe, so thank you all for your service.
And thank you for coming, and saving the night, appreciate it.